The Board Meeting of the Board of Education for January 11, 2022 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tabs. This meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV Services website and on Channel 28 and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to everyone here. On January 3, the Oregon Health Authority and Oregon Department of Education released a school health advisory to be in effect from January 3 through January 31 in order to help with the recent surge of COVID cases due to the Omicron variant. These extra mitigation efforts are in place to help reduce the spread of COVID so that districts can prioritize in-person learning for students. This guidance includes the recommendation that schools hold events such as conferences, meetings, and fundraisers online rather than in person. In order to comply with that recommendation, for the month of January, all board meetings will be closed to the public. We know it's always preferable to be able to meet in person fully, but we want to do our part in helping to support the effort to prioritize in-person learning for our students. I want to add that my hope in this moment is to focus on solutions that don't pit parents against teachers, teachers against administration, board members against everyone else, and I want to remind us all of the care and concern that I know we're capable of in this community when we work in service of the district's children. To shout at each other hasn't proven to be effective, but collaborating can be. We have a better chance of bailing the water out of the ship if all hands are on deck. I want to thank the teachers, parents, board colleagues, the superintendent and his staff, and families and community members who show up on playgrounds, cafeterias, and libraries, and those who have been on deck since March of 2020. I'm going to say it, and this is hard, and this is likely to get harder in the coming days. It's going to require patience and grit. And what we can do, what can we do as individuals and collectively as community members who love our babies so much do in this moment to be part of the solution? And I'd like to ground us in being solution-oriented tonight. So there's multiple perspectives to consider, but likely no, there's no one way to get this right. Please join me in trying to solve for the biggest challenge we'll probably ever face together. Join me in solutions that work for the most vulnerable students and families in our district and in finding ways forward that while imperfect, help us recover and move forward together. That's more words than I usually say in two weeks. The Board will now vote on Board Leadership.
Would you like a motion?
I was just going to get to that. I was taking a breath from having talked for so long.
I wasn't sure if you were waiting for something. I was happy to oblige.
Do I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution?
Make the motion.
I appreciate, we do, I did want to make a note that we would like to get through this considering that staff's been working long days.
I make a motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6431, election of the Board Chairperson. Director Green moves. Director Constam seconds the adoption of Resolution 6431.
We need a name put in there, though.
That would be...
Madam Chair, I recommend that we add into Resolution 6431 Michelle DePass as the Chair.
Thank you. Director Green made the motion. Director Constam seconded the motion of adoption of Resolution 6431. Michelle DePass is Chairperson. Thank you. Is there any board discussion?
I am going to be a no on that vote tonight, and the reason for that is that there's been a complete failure in the negotiation of the superintendent's contract, that we've been more than six months on trying to get a contract done for Superintendent Guerrero. And I know that every single board member up here has stated that they want to have Superintendent Guerrero continue leading the district, and Superintendent Guerrero has also stated clearly that he wants to stay and continue the good work that the leadership has begun with the strategic plan and the board goals. There's been a complete lack of communication and transparency around the contract, and in fact, it is not listed in our board policy that it is the role of the Chair to do the board contract. And so if you are re-elected tonight, I would ask that you pass that responsibility squarely to Vice Chair Scott if he is re-elected to that role and have him be the lead on the contract negotiations because we have not been able to move forward on that. And it has already started causing massive chaos in our executive leadership team. We're seeing that. The meeting we just had earlier tonight, that vital, vital work that we all agree is the heart of our district will be supremely negatively impacted if Superintendent Guerrero leaves us. And right now, we don't have a superintendent for next year, and we don't have a plan and we don't have a path. And so I am deeply concerned about the failure of those contract negotiations and the vital need to have that happen immediately. So for that reason, I'm not able to vote yes tonight.
Thank you for that. Is there any additional conversation?
Madam Chair, I feel that I need to respond to that. Having been in the Chair's role several times and having negotiated the superintendent's contract on behalf of the Board, with the Board, and I do know that negotiating the superintendent's contract involves two parties. And as I told you privately last week, it's hard being Chair, and I think you have expressed your sincere interest in doing that, and I think you have brought in board members into the conversation in a way that I would expect the Chair to. So I feel the process has been transparent to me, but I don't think it's, from my point of view, I'm going to be supporting you as to be the Chair because I know the work is hard, but I also know that the fact that there is not a contract is not something that you own 100% at all. And I wouldn't support, and this isn't any reflection on Director Scott or the Vice Chair, but I would not support passing it to somebody else because I do believe that this should be the Chair's role, and I'm supportive of you continuing to make that effort. And as I said, it takes two parties to reach an agreement, and we all, you also have a Board in which there are a variety, as you know, on a whole host of topic, a variety of opinions, and you could easily, at any meeting, put something to vote on the agenda, but that doesn't mean it would pass or that we have agreement with the superintendent. So I don't view this at all as a failure, and I'm not supportive of passing the baton to somebody else. And again, please don't take any personal offense, Director Scott, because it's not you. It's just I believe if we're going to support you as Chair, Director DePass, that that is the role that you should play.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
I support your candidacy for Chair and appreciate your willingness to serve and appreciate all your hard work today, and I also appreciate Director Lowry, you raising this issue because it is absolutely critical. And one of the difficulties of being Chair is that you do hold accountability for leading the organization for good and for ill, and it's hard. But that's why I do think it is appropriate to say that even though this is a challenge, it is ultimately the Chair's responsibility to make sure that we get that difficult work done. I think you and Director Scott are a great team, so work together or pass the baton to Director Scott if you think that seems appropriate as well, but it is critically important that we resolve this. And I also want to make it very clear, there was a statement made that there are two parties in negotiations. Yes, that's true, but that cannot pass as an aspersion on the superintendent, any lack of willingness on the superintendent's part to re-up with us and to resolve the contract quickly. So, thank you, and onward.
Thank you. And in the spirit of transparency, I appreciate your comments there. This is, has been a difficult negotiation. When I first got into the chairship position, I was somewhat critical of the contract we had in front of us, and in order to address the contract, I entered into a contract with legal expertise from a person from Stoll Reeves, a lawyer from Stoll Reeves, who has extensive experience advocating on behalf of school boards to negotiate superintendent contracts. I felt like that was a decision that I made, knowing that I hadn't, didn't have the experience negotiating, first of all, employment contracts, but second of all, executive employment contracts. I think it was best practices for me to resource the expertise that I didn't have. So I also feel a sense of urgency about the contract. I also feel that turnabout is fair play because I abstained from voting on your chairship. But I believe that the contract negotiation has been kept me up at night. I've had multiple conversations with all of you. Terms have changed over the time. I haven't laid out every play-by-play, and to your point about Chair Scott, that's an interesting proposition. Do you know how many times I've thought I could just call him up and give him the job? And I've refrained from doing so because I think we do work well together, and we've actually been in every single contract conversation together. There has not been a single, I don't think, conversation where the Vice Chair has not been present. So I take responsibility for my position in holding this up, moving the work forward, and want to recognize that it's a difficult position to be in, as you should well know, managing this process. So we're going to go, if there, are there any other further discussions about this, or can we please move on? This is uncomfortable. I believe we have a motion. I'm sorry. We need to call for the vote. So there's board discussion. We don't, is there any public comment about this issue? So the Board will now vote on Resolution 6431, election of the Board Chairperson. Michelle DePass, that would be me. All in favor? And I should say that I'm not sure why, but I do want the job. I'd like to finish it up until June 30 of 2022, and I reminded that I skied uphill for 10 hours one time, and I signed up for that, too. So I have the, I'm determined to get this over the finish line, and we'll do so with the help of all of my colleagues here. So the Board will now vote on Resolution 6431, election of Board Chairperson. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Are there any abstentions? Resolution is approved by a vote of six to one with Student Representative Weinberg unofficially voting.
Yes.
And I bought him a book, so I think, thank you.
I don't think you're supposed to say that. That's bribery.
We're going to now go to the election of the Board Vice Chairperson. That's why I wanted to declare it.
It was under the gift limit, though.
Yes. It was well under the gift limit. Election of the Board Vice Chairperson. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6432?
I'm making a motion. Director Green is making a motion again. He's going to be in the minutes this year.
Director Green moves. Do I have a second? Director Hollins? This is the first meeting. I haven't had to look at you.
And yeah, we need to make sure it says, I mean, I nominate Andrew Scott to be Vice Chair.
Do we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6432, election of Vice Chairperson Andrew Scott?
Yes, I make the motion to nominate Dr. Andrew Scott.
Everybody's a doctor.
And Director Hollins, seconds. Thank you. Is there any board discussion?
I'll just say thanks for the nomination, and I've enjoyed working with you over the last six months. I'm going to enjoy working future. I also appreciate that. I had no idea that people were going to make comments tonight, but thank you for those, and I'm confident we can get done the things we need to get done over the next six months.
I appreciate it. I look forward to working with you, too. It's been quite a great challenge. Okay, the Board will now vote on Resolution 6432, election of Board Vice Chairperson Andrew Scott. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6432 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
Next, the Board will vote on the consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items you'd like to pull, sorry, for discussion, we'll set those aside for discussion and vote at the end of the meeting. Ms. Brett, I'm sorry. Ms. Powell, do we have any changes? Are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda?
Make a motion. Director Green is making the motion.
Director Green moves. Director Scott seconds the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there any board discussion on the consent agenda? The Board will now vote on Resolutions 6424 through 6427. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
We'll now move to student and public comment. Excuse me just a moment. Ms. Powell, do we have anyone signed up for public testimony?
Yes, we have five people. Let me start by moving in.
Before we begin, I'd like to review our guidelines for public comment. First, the Board thanks you for taking the time to attend the meeting virtually and providing comments. Public input informs and improves our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, your reflections, your concerns. Our responsibility as a Board is to listen actively. We can do that by making eye contact and putting our phones down. Our Board Office may follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. We request that any complaints about individual employees please be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. And if you have additional materials or items you'd like to provide to the Board or superintendent, we ask that you email them to publiccomment@pps.net. Please make sure when you begin your comment that you clearly state your name and spell your last name. You'll have three minutes to speak, and you'll hear a sound after three minutes, which means it's time to conclude your comments. Ms. Powell, do you want to let the first person in?
Yes, we have Allison Harden here.
Hi. You hear me?
Yes, we do hear you.
We can hear you. Thank you.
My name is Allison Harden. That's H-A-R-D-I-N. I am a parent of two student athletes at Lincoln High School. With kids athletics, I have become extremely aware of the shortage of athletic fields in the city of Portland. That is why I supported a project presented two years ago, a multi-sport field at West Sylvan Middle School, which was proposed as a swing space for our Lincoln student athletes displaced from their field during construction. Our community worked hard to get this approved by the city of Beaverton, but then the pandemic hit, and it seems to have been swept under the rug. I am advocating on behalf of our kids and families to bring this project back to life. The following is why I believe this is such a critical project to move forward for our community. At PPS, we share a common belief that if thriving academic and athletic program will elevate each other and that athletics is an important opportunity for students in our public high schools. Safe and accessible places to play are critical to our high school athletics programs. However, with Lincoln being in the middle of a hilly urban area, access to fields and courts is a significant challenge. Even with the new construction, Lincoln High School's field space will not meet the educational specifications for a high school due to the limited space on our urban campus. The West Sylvan Field would help bridge this gap. It is just four miles away from Lincoln High School and has already been approved for a multi-use field by the city of Beaverton. This multi-sport field could provide students access to practice facilities at times that are safe and at locations that, a location that is reasonable for Lincoln and West Sylvan athletes to access after school. When there is a home football game, for example, the other fall sports could practice at West Sylvan rather than traveling all over the city like they do now. So why now? Much of the planning has been done, and the project is ready to launch. Beaverton has approved the plan, and if started soon, it could serve as a swing space during construction of the new Lincoln Field, and then later serve as a regular practice space for years to come. We have a near-term opportunity to use either swing space funding that was set aside for displaced teams during construction or to use reserve funds from the Lincoln construction. Either way, we believe that the budget is there to complete this project now. Let's focus on a shared commitment to progress for all students of PPS. We do not want to pit one school against another, but rather help build each other up. Let's find a way to yes to this and other athletic facilities across the district. Together, we can envision and build a PPS where all communities have thriving academic and athletic programs that build on each other and promote progress for all. Thank you for listening tonight.
Thank you. And now I want to thank you for Director Brum Edwards pointed out that Resolution 6427 was included in our consent agenda, but we have staff ready to present on the approval request for the future Bill Whitella Senator Fieldhouse. Is there a staff report on this?
Don't we have more public testimony?
We do, but I'd like to interrupt it because we wrapped this resolution into our consent agenda. It's actually a separate item.
And we have people that want to testify?
And we do have people that want to testify, but I thought there was a staff report on this, or is there not? Okay. Never mind. I stand corrected. We'll move forward with public testimony.
Madam Chair, I had one question. Typically, we've put students first during public comment. I was just wondering if we switched that.
We don't have student comment tonight. There are no students.
Okay, because the email that Kara sent said we had four people signed up.
And yes.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to check.
Thank you.
And I just want to repeat that for those at home. Those students have since withdrawn. I don't know that your mic was on, Roseanne.
Thank you. So we've already, we have already voted on the approval request for the future Bill Whitella Senator Fieldhouse at McDaniel High School.
Wasn't a separate agenda item? Sorry.
She said that was duplicative, and it was supposed to be a consent agenda.
But it got posted in our board book as a separate item, sorry.
It did. And we need to resume our public comments then.
Yeah, it's a little confusing. It's, the script is off, too.
So, thank you. Since it was listed on our public agenda, can there at least be, we don't need to have a long discussion, but at least just like one minute, who we're honoring, who we honored with?
I just want to be clear. I mean, in my, what I see here, it's listed on the consent agenda, 6427, and it's, 6427 is the McDaniel Fieldhouse? When I read it, I assumed it was consent agenda and that we did it.
When it originally was posted, was it a consent?
So I think what we can do is honor that. Maybe, I know Chair DePass, you're interested in time. I think we had a memo from staff there in the consent agenda, and it lovely talks about the gentleman that we're honoring. I remember that he was, I'll read it now. "E. Coach Bill Whitella was a social studies teacher, coach, and athletic director at Madison High School, which is now named McDaniel High School. He coached the 1963 and 1964 Madison baseball teams to state championships after winning the Portland Interscholastic League title each of those years. He then served in the role of Athletic Director from 1966 to 1988 before moving to the Portland Interscholastic League District Administration Office until his retirement in 1991." And this is in alignment with our values around naming buildings, and it says, "The decision to recommend Bill Whitella Senator Fieldhouse as the name for the future structure supports the original naming committee's desire to create a shared history to celebrate what was and will remain a priority of the McDaniel High School community. Coach Bill Whitella represents the McDaniel High School community values of community, respect, education, equity, and diversity, and is deserving of this honor."
Thank you for that. And yeah, he was also a recognized athlete in two sports, University of Portland alum, and good sport all around. It was great to read his bio.
And I just want to thank Director Lowry because I think anytime we make a decision like that, that is going to memorialize someone, it's good to highlight why they are being honored, and I think it's just part of the memorialization process, so thank you for doing that, and I'm glad we approved it.
Yes, thank you. Let's move along now to complete our public comments. Ms., and thank you, Director Lowry. That's great. When you get a building named after you, we'll be sure to talk about your life in positive attributes and characteristics. Ms. Powell, who do we have signed up next for public testimony?
Next, we have David Scolton.
Good evening. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Abernathy. My son is a first grader at Richmond. My name is David Scolton. My last name is spelled S-C-H-O-L-T-E-N. Yesterday, I walked out of my fifth-grade classroom into the hallway and saw something that truly touched me. Our substitute administrator was walking hand in hand, speaking gently with one of our most impacted kindergarteners. This administrator stepped up to care for him when he was unable to function in the classroom. Immediately, I thought, this is what leadership looks like. This scene in the hallway stands in stark contrast to policies and practices developed by the PPS senior leadership team. Instead of holding the hands of our most vulnerable students, PPS is plowing forward with in-person learning as if these students and their families are not getting sick right before our very eyes. Instead of holding the hands of our most vulnerable students, PPS refuses to put safety measures in place like providing high-quality masks and comprehensive onsite testing. Instead of holding the hands of our most vulnerable students, PPS continues to ignore the rising levels of educator illness and stress, instead vilifying the people who literally hold students' hands every day. Instead of holding the hands of our most vulnerable students, PPS is holding the hands of the Kims and the Renays of our community, holding the hands of adults acting like selfish children, throwing temper tantrums when they don't get what they want, adults who should know better than to suddenly throw around terms like equity and black and brown students most impacted when it benefits them without the long-term track record of advocating for these same communities. But it makes sense to me that PPS leadership, without deep ties to the community, would mistakenly hold the wrong children's hands. I've learned enough in my seven years here at PPS not to take that personally. I don't blame Sean Byrd for coming into our system, shaking things up, proposing simulcast, heading up two disastrous curriculum adoptions, and leaving less than three years later. I don't blame Cheryl Proctor for following Sean Byrd into our district and being assigned his position after less than six months here in PPS, taking on the leading role in curriculum and instruction with no knowledge of the communities she will surely impact. I know that the problem is not personal, it's systemic, and ladder-climbing admin are just playing the game. The problem is, this game hurts children. I have two suggested solutions tonight. The first is for a pause to in-person instruction to keep public education intact and our communities safe while we add additional safety measures like better masks and testing. My second, please acknowledge that we have a very serious problem of revolving door leadership. The health and well-being of our communities requires us to have steady, long-term leadership that is in touch with both the schools they serve and the surrounding communities. Please stop hiring out-of-state admin who are clearly playing the ladder-climbing game. The revolving door of PPS senior leadership guarantees that our most impacted students will walk the halls of our schools with no one to hold their hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Powell, who do we have next?
My name is Rachel Chang. I'm here to...
I'm here today because I made a promise to my son, who is very upset and worried about the change that might occur with enrollment and program balance, also because I'm deeply disturbed by four charity paths openly dismissive of Asian kids. She said, and I quote, "I, again, really, really in favor of the option that serve our black and brown kids." Apparently, when she talked about racial equality, it's only for black and brown students and no other. And I have concern for many board members that they would just trust the expert on the matter of whole-school DLI better. The research is being presented in such an unbalanced way. The data that PPS was willing to share last year was almost 20 years old. After the community kept pushing to share the actual data, PPS finally came out with some data last Thursday. But the data wasn't even about comparing the success of the whole-school DLI versus co-located. Rather, PPS used co-located DLI as a scapegoat for the lower SES for the need help. The solution shouldn't treating DLI students as a second-class citizen by shoving them around to make the enrollment goal, while tearing apart a successful co-op like USTAR. The fact is, USTAR has a co-located program, and the student performance is above average, including ELL student. Even Dr. All admit, USTAR is the most successful co-located program. Four charity paths said, "Let's rid off the bandit. Kids will survive, kids are resilient, changing make them stronger." But that isn't always the case. Recently, a searching journal issued a warning, a widespread of youth mental health crisis. And don't the kids have enough changing already? One day, they can go to school, then they can't. One day, they can hold their best friend's hand, the next, they have to keep six feet away. How many more changes are we going to ask them to endure before we finally break them? Chinese family, we feel safe, welcome, and support at USTAR, more important than ever with increasing Asian hate crime. And this community doesn't happen overnight. It took many, many years of devoted people to get where we are today. Ninety-one percent of USTAR family who took a survey, including neighborhood and MIP boys, they want to stay co-located. When it is time to vote, I'm asking board member, please to listen to what family have to say, and please, including Asian family. Even if the expert did have the data to support the whole-school DLI, which we have not seen, those experts won't be there when the parents tell their kids heartbreaking news. They won't be there to dealing with the hardship of commute when the parents need to think, how can they keep their job while sending their kid to school on time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Donin?
Can we move to the next person?
Can you hear me?
Thank you, we can. Mr. Donin?
Yes, Richard Donin.
Donin.
D-O-N-I-N. Donin. Hopefully, you have a number of emails that I sent in to the Board Secretary, and I'm here because I heard on the news that the school district was hiring unqualified folks to be substitutes without a college degree, and I found that to be appalling. So, in the documents I hope you have in front of you, I sent along my resume. I was a Portland Public Schools science teacher for nearly 15 years, and so I decided to sign up to be an emergency substitute, because after 15 years, I didn't think I know how to write a lesson plan, and I know how to teach high school science. The process was delayed slightly, and in there, I have some information about, let me see, professional references dating back 1981, 1982, Assistant Superintendent Schneider, and also another one, showing that not only was my competence valued, but I had wonderful relationships in the district. I also ran a program called the Energy Studies Center, raised over, slightly over half a million dollars for educational programs in the district to where students and teachers got trained. The hardest part was dealing with your HR people. I got, it's in there, it's number four, hopefully you have it, and I will read it. I know that you own a company, if there's anyone you've worked with and/or customer relationships you've built, those may be sufficient for, you know, personal references, even though they aren't supervisors. Well, I don't know what world HR people work in, but I've spent 20 years developing a very high relationship and wonderful rep with the music industry, which is what I work in. So, my private company is not about to go to a client, whether it be a Grammy winner or a local band, to ask them to provide a personal reference when I have been a teacher in the district for nearly 15 years. So, if you are interested in having qualified people with degrees, experience, and know how to deal with classroom management issues, I thought I would be the person you would want to have as an emergency person to substitute. But it appears that that is not the case. It appears that the substitute office can't think outside the box, even though my-
Mr. Donin, excuse me, I don't know if you heard, it's a very soft sound, but your three minutes are up.
Oh, sorry.
I also want to share with you that the board doesn't typically get involved with personnel issues, and I also appreciate you coming tonight.
Hopefully, things will change.
Well, thank you for your input.
And qualified people.
Thank you.
And our last person tonight is Grace Groome.
Thank you. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing my testimony tonight. My name is Grace Groome, last name spelled G-R-O-O-M. I'm the mother of two Portland Public School students, and also have the honor of serving as a second-grade teacher at Markham Elementary. I'm testifying tonight to ask that as the budget process for next year moves forward, you all hold in your minds and hearts the reality of our school communities. Students are hurting, families are hurting, and school staff are hurting. We need leaders like you to show you have our backs by increasing funding for direct-service school staff. This will support the necessary healing for us to move forward towards more equitable outcomes for students. Direct-service school staff are the frontline of support for students and families. Teachers and direct-service support staff are addressing learning gaps due to COVID, making sure families are connected to wraparound services, and supporting the social, emotional, well-being of our students every day. During the pandemic, the needs of my students and their families have been so much greater than any previous year in my career. The trauma my students have and are currently dealing with is overwhelming. The first step towards healing from trauma is establishing a sense of safety. With the pandemic continuing to impact our community, we are not able to establish the sense of safety in our schools right now. The way to do this is to provide more trained, caring adults to serve students directly. The wrong way to do this is to continue on the path that you've chosen, limiting access to direct-service staff while increasing positions in upper administration. On the eve of the last bargaining meeting with PAT, in which our senior leadership recommended taking the last planning day of the year off the end of the year and putting it in March, leaving zero paid time for teachers to do end-of-the-year report cards and pack up classrooms, that same leadership team posted a new, and in my view redundant, position on the leadership team. The starting salary, $90,000. The number of years of experience required serving students, zero. The job description for this project manager listed the word "project" at least 25 times. Here's a project for you all to consider. Take a hard look at any additional staffing requests that do not provide direct service to students. As our board chair shared with the opening of this meeting, the ship that is our school district is taking on water. To right the ship, we don't just need all hands on deck, we need more hands on deck. Our students need more caring adults in their lives now more than ever. Please plan next year's budget to give them what they need. And in closing, I would like to ask, if any of you are willing to visit my classroom and volunteer in person, my doors are open, the students are wonderful, and please come to my second-grade classroom to support their needs. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Groome, and I will take you up on your offer. I hope every one of my colleagues does as well. I appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
And that is end of public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. I'm going to take this opportunity to move a couple of things around, because we have a tight time deadline on guests that are in the room. I'm having a vision problem tonight that is just literally not seeing what's in front of me. We're going to get an update on school operations during the Omicron surge of COVID, schools' transitions to temporary distance learning, extracurricular arts and athletics criteria for those transitions to remote learning, and student and school support. Dr. Adams and Chief Garcia will be introducing this item. Thank you.
I gave you my pink glasses in case they help you to see.
Good evening, Directors. Thank you for having us to provide you an update on the impact of the Omicron surge on school operations. Joining me here is Dr. Renard Adams. I had another cast of characters here that were going to join us, but they were called elsewhere. So, tonight, we're going to share two major updates. One, as the school board knows, and our broader community knows, we've began to transition schools into temporary distance learning, and so we wanted to give you an update on how that's going. The second thing that we want to update you on is some health and safety updates. Joining us tonight are folks from Monoma County's Public Health Office, Dr. Vines and Dr. Gurnsley, and so they'll be here virtually. So, I actually do want to get to that piece, because I'm sure you have questions for our public health officials, and I want to get to that. So, next slide. So, Directors, as you know, this Omicron variant of COVID-19, while less severe, is faster transmitting, meaning that it's spreading across our community pretty rapidly, and our data suggests that, you know, we've been meeting regularly with the Oregon Health, or OHSCU, sorry, who continues to forecast the way in which this variant is spreading. And what we know is that although the COVID vaccine is helping reduce the serious illness and hospitalization, it is still very infectious. And so, but unlike Delta, it is likely less to hospitalized a person who's fully vaccinated and boosted. What we've heard from our public health officials and experts is that they're forecasted to see the peak of this Omicron variant in and around January 27. As you can see here on the right of your screen, that is the number of positive hospitalized patients with COVID-19, and again, that looks to peak on January 27. So, what's happening in our broader community is having a direct impact on our school communities. And so, our schools, which are just a reflection of our community, are seeing the impact. So, we're seeing a dramatic rise in absences and reported illness by both students and staff. And so, again, as Directors know and as broader community knows, we've had to make the decision to move some schools to temporary distance learning. And I think it's important to note that as a school system and with Superintendent Guerrero's leadership, our goal is to keep school buildings open and to maintain in-person instruction as much as possible. We consider temporary closures as one of our schools, of one of our schools to be, activities to be a measure of last resort, and I think that needs to be very clear to our broader community. We are looking at schools and looking at data because we are trying, our effort is to maintain in-person instruction as much as possible, and temporary closing schools is a measure of last resort. And so, again, just wanted to reiterate what our superintendent has shared previously. And so, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Adams to kind of walk you through, give you a little taste of what it's like to make a decision like this, give you a sense of what we look at, and kind of what the process is like, as well as sharing with you, when schools move into temporary distance learning, what should families expect? So, Dr. Adams?
Thank you, Jonathan. Could I have the next slide, please? So, it's been of great interest across the community how we come to the decision and what data points we actually examine when we're making the very difficult choice to transition to temporary distance learning. One of the things that has happened immediately is we've stood up our Emergency Operations Center. It's been activated, and this is a group of individuals who serve as a single source of information, management, and decision-making at this time. If you've seen TV shows such as NCIS or FBI, and you see their command center rooms, it's very much that look and feel. We're monitoring multiple data points in real time. We're in contact with staff on the ground in buildings, and we're taking all of that into consideration. As schools rise to the top of our monitoring list, we then invite in conversations with the school administration, so we can hear more information firsthand about what's going on the ground. And so, some of the data, we meet five times a day, beginning at 6:30 in the morning, and the group is actually meeting right now. That's why Jonathan and I had walked away, and we came back to have this presentation with all of you. The data we monitor include the following. We monitor the number of student and staff positive cases of COVID-19. We also monitor and are monitoring the number of students and staff that are either in quarantine or isolation. We're looking at student attendance on a daily basis. We look at staffing vacancies, including unfilled positions after substitute educators are in place. We're also, as you may know, we've also been deploying central office certified staff to buildings to help shore up in-person instruction. So, on a daily basis, we're also looking at the number of those staff that are available, because COVID is, again, affecting everyone, including central office staff members and their availability to support in-person instruction in schools. We're also thinking about some of our special programs and whether that might be a factor or consideration into whether we may move a school to temporary distance learning. The decision overall is made by the EOC team as a group in consultation with the principals, and then a communication protocol begins where we, the principal is informed and collaborated with, we let the board know, we start letting families and community know. And so, it's a very dynamic process as we look at these data points and make these very, it's a complex decision-making matrix that we're using at the moment in order to determine whether to go into temporary distance learning. If I could have the next slide, please? That being said, I'd like to note that of our 81 schools, only five have transitioned to temporary distance learning. This means that 76 of our campuses are still in process of delivering in-person instruction, which we know and highly value for the health, safety, and well-being of our students and staff. So, on the slide- So on the slide before you are the names of the five schools that have transitioned to temporary distance learning. It also, this slide also provides you the planning day that staff has as a part of our agreement when we make a transition to temporary distance learning. That first day is a planning day for staff to prepare distance learning instruction for students. The chart also gives you the start date of the temporary distance learning for each school and the projected end date of the temporary distance learning for each school. I'll give you just a moment, a few seconds to be able to look at that. And if I could have the next slide, please? So, one of the other questions is what do I expect? As a parent, as a student, what is this going to look like? And as I mentioned, day one after the transition, after being notified that we're moving to distance learning, the school facility will be closed. Families will have access to apps and featured learning content, so there will be asynchronous instruction, and educators will use this opportunity to begin their transition and do their planning for the following day. And then once we're in temporary distance learning on that second school day, educators will meet in real time with students during their regularly scheduled class time. Teachers will continue to provide both whole person, whole group, excuse me, and small group instruction, as well as to provide independent work for students and opportunities for students to check in with their teacher for some guided feedback from their educators. The school principal and classroom teachers are both contacting families with more information about those daily schedules and those learning activities. Jonathan?
Great. And so, last, one of the, do you want me to do this?
Yes.
Okay. So, the, what we shared with our communities as we're closing our schools temporarily, some of our schools temporarily, is that we are going to prioritize some essential services. And so, this includes the nutrition services. Our families will still have access to breakfast and lunch that will be offered for pickup while students are in temporary distance learning. When we announced Fabian K8 as an example, we know that a lot of the students that attend Fabian live in Hayden Island and some other areas, and so we actually are delivering food to those school communities to kind of give you an example of what is happening. As you all know, earlier this year, thanks to voters and thanks to your leadership, PPS instituted a one-to-one Chromebook Take Home Initiative, meaning that every student grades three to 12 has access to a computer that they can take home with them. And so, we have been providing those to our families, as well as the families in K2 that have transitioned, so Fabian in particular. We've also opened our PPS Technical Support Line for students and families to access. So if you need help accessing your Chromebook or turning it on, folks can call or email our tech support. In close partnership with Monoma County, as you all know, Monoma County helps lift up some health centers across our schools, and those remain open for any students in grades K to 12 who live and go to school at PPS. And this is a little bit of a new, a new update from last week. So last week, as you all know, when we made the decision to shift to distance learning, we also made a decision to pause temporarily extracurricular activities to really assess our capacity and the safety in front of us, right? Again, this is a dynamic situation. Things are moving pretty rapidly, and so we made the decision to pause. And after we've considered, looked at data, looked at our opportunities and our preparation, we have reinstituted a number of limited in-person activities on school campuses. So I just want to name those two things. The first thing that we are going to be sharing a little bit more details about in the coming days, our teams are actively working on designing and developing the plans here, again, in close partnership with our school administrators, to provide temporary in-person supports. This is in-person academic supports to those students who need to successfully complete coursework, and for students who need in-person counseling, resources, or other things. So you can imagine opening up our schools for students to come in and work, you know, if they're part of the robotics team and they have to build out a robot, right? And it's bringing those students together in supervised ways, in small ways, to support those in-person activities. In addition to these temporary in-person supports, we are reinstituting and resuming PIL sports and performing arts immediately. In order to deal with the growing cases of COVID, we are going to be limiting spectators. And again, more information will be coming forward tomorrow to our broader community. But again...
I just want you to repeat that, Jonathan, because we've gotten like 87,000 emails about this. So could you, we are resuming sports and performing arts at schools that transition to distance learning. So even if the school is in distance learning...
Correct.
Extracurriculars will continue with the ODE outlined mitigation efforts.
Correct.
Thank you.
So PIL sports, our basketball teams, our wrestling teams, and our swimming teams, whether you're at Roosevelt, McDaniel, Cleveland, they can resume practice and games. And I know that there's a big game day on Friday for a lot of these teams. So we look forward to being at the gyms cheering on our students as they resume PIL sports.
I just want to say thank you. I know that that was a lot of work and conversation, and once again, I think this really underlines the staff that are, the fact that our leadership is so responsive to our community, that when a decision is made, there's always listening and growth and learning. And so I so appreciate the fact that, I know senior leadership has talked about this and looked at capacity, and really, again, what is best for our students. So thank you so much for always adjusting, always being willing to learn, always willing to have the conversation, and to center our students in everything you do.
Appreciate it.
Share to pass. So I also thank the superintendent and the staff who made that happen. I know it's super important to students, whatever their extracurricular activity was, to not have that interrupted, because the next month is going to be a roller coaster. And while it may be three high schools right now, it may be three different ones next week. So appreciate that we were able to solve, have a solve for that. Just a question, now that we have a solve for it, and as I assume, there's the possibility that other high schools may or may not be rolling in and out, is that, because this was a very clear equity issue at the beginning where some students would, are we going to just continue? Is it going to be continued, or will there be also an inflection point if a high school moves into a, into comprehensive distance learning, that they'll have a moment in time like the three high schools did, that they won't be able to participate?
I think we can probably prudently say is, we just needed the day or two to round up best thinking with our athletic director, Marshall Haskins, and all the school-based coaches around. This is a critical time in their season. We've been, our student athletes and schools, communities have been good about their health and safety mitigation efforts. We want to continue to reinforce those. There were some outstanding questions, like our athletes want to have an audience and their parents. So we think by putting in a system like, you know, an allotment of tickets for each student athlete to prioritize audience members, because what we know is, there's only a percentage of our gymnasium we should be filling up to ensure some level of safety and social distancing. So kind of calculating, you know, what's the maximum capacity on a game night, and then how do we distribute tickets fairly? So lots of folks who, you know, we have some exciting games, for example. You might have to catch the live stream just to make sure our student athletes have an opportunity, especially our seniors, to finish out the season.
So I think what you're saying is, now that we have systems in place...
So now that we have those systems, thank you for reminding me to finish my sentence, is, you know, we'll apply those same guidelines to any high school should they find themselves in a similar circumstance.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Actually, I'm going to pause on questions because we do have our public health officials here that are only here till 7:45, and they have a really important update to share with our broader community. And so I'll come back to your question around temporary distance learning, as well as some health and safety updates. So I'm actually going to skip some of these slides because, again, I just want to make sure, well, let me just go through these really quick. So as directors know, you know, from the beginning of this pandemic, we know is if we put layered health and safety measures at PPS, you know, we can mitigate the spread of COVID-19. And, you know, our data shows, research shows, that controlled environments, where there's universal mask wearing, where there's airflow and ventilation, as a reminder, we upgraded all of our ventilation to MERV-13 standards, we have air filters and purifiers in every classroom, we have COVID-19 testing programs like symptomatic testing, asymptomatic testing, as well as an array of other measures that we put in place to protect against COVID-19. We also have pop-up clinics that we've been instituting since the beginning of the school year. We have some upcoming pop-up clinics here at James John and Markham, so please mark your calendars for those if you are still needing a booster, your first dose, your second dose. We also, last week, established a COVID-19 staff testing site. As we know, the tests are really difficult to come by here in the state and across the country, and so luckily, we were able to establish a testing site for school-based staff who are serving students in person, so that they have a sense of their status. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Guernsey and Dr. Vines to talk about new K-12 isolation and quarantine procedures that the county shared with us this morning. We, as PPS, look forward to implementing these, starting on Tuesday. The reason why we're waiting until Tuesday is because, as you can imagine, with a big system like ours, with 81 different schools, there is standard operating procedures that need to be updated, there's trainings that need to happen to ensure that our community of staff and leaders understand these new shifts in guidance. And so with that, Dr. Vines and Dr. Guernsey, do you want to give our directors an update here on these new procedures?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
If my audio gets crackly, Jen, I might have to turn it over to you sometimes on this forum, this particular forum, and my audio gets a little weird. Hi, everybody. My name is Jessica Guernsey. I am the Public Health Director at Multnomah County Health Department. I use she or hers pronouns, and I have to own that I am not a doctor, although I do think my alum, Portland State, should consider giving me an honorary doctorate after this whole thing is over. This has been quite a wild ride. I do have a master's in public health and have practiced public health locally for over 20 years. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the entire PPS community. I'm a PPS parent myself, and just really, it brings me to tears when I hear and work with you all in all that you're doing to ensure continuity of education and all of the important things that schools do in our community. So, again, as a community member, a parent, and someone working with you all through this, I just thank you from the bottom of my heart. You all are just doing amazing work. Before we talk about the specifics and the changes that were just mentioned, I just want to set the stage a little bit and acknowledge that we're in a pretty massive pivot time right now. Omicron, as a variant, is very different from the last variant that we had, the Delta variant. We're seeing a very different pattern of spread and trajectory, as was talked about earlier. We're in a very, we hope, and we have reason to believe, that we're in a very compressed epic curve for this particular variant. So it is, things are moving fast and furious, and things are changing. And I just want to acknowledge for, as was just mentioned, for systems as large as PPS, when things, you know, come real time to us and we're trying to make decisions to balance the very important needs of both protecting the health of students and the school community, but also really getting to that core goal of keeping schools open for as much in-person education time as possible, that is a primary public health goal. Just truly understanding, again, from my own perspective as a parent, but also as a public health practitioner, that the importance of school cannot be understated. So really, that is squarely within our vision, even as we're moving through a very turbulent time, and we do expect this next month to be fairly rough, but we hope this next piece that Dr. Vines is going to talk about, and she is a doctor, by the way, that is an important contribution to helping navigate some of these changes. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Vines.
Thanks, Jessica. Good evening, everybody. For those listening, I'm Dr. Jennifer Vines. I use she/her pronouns. I am a physician. I'm the Multnomah County Health Officer. Really glad to be here with you tonight to support your efforts. It's not a surprise to me that you have an emergency operations center open. I think it's a sign of the very dynamic times that we're in, so very happy to partner with you. I would also just echo what Jessica said about our public health goal of keeping schools open. In terms of kids' immediate and lifelong health and well-being, they need to be in school, and I think this has been one of the clearest and most difficult lessons of this pandemic. So for the parents who've spoken to me, emailed me, I absolutely hear you. I'm going to get to what's on this slide, which is really a kind of complicated algorithm. I'm going to get to that in just a moment. I want to talk about things like keeping schools open that we can kind of hang our hats on right now. That is getting vaccinated. So anyone who is eligible for vaccine, they have a fantastic safety track record, Pfizer, Moderna. Get vaccinated. If it's been at least five months since you got your dose, go get a booster and make a plan to get one as soon as possible. Also, I know everybody is sick of masks, but we are not done with masks yet. So double down on your masking, make sure it fits well, make sure it's the highest quality that you can get your hands on, and that it's comfortable, that you can wear it for long periods of time. And then the other thing that is not going to change is to stay home if you are sick. So that is true if you have tested negative for COVID. If you are unwell, you should be at home. That is basic prevention. And similarly, if you are sick with COVID and test positive, we're going to get into some of the other guidance here. So again, those are things that we can say with some certainty. What has changed about how long you stay home if you're sick or test positive with COVID is that it's been shortened by the Centers for Disease Control. And there are really two reasons that the CDC put forward for this change. The first is the way that the Omicron virus behaves, and it's a very, it's just a very compressed timeline in terms of how quickly someone goes from having the virus in their nose and throat to having symptoms or showing a test positive, and then how long they're infectious, that is all compressed. So people are probably most infectious in the one or two days before they develop symptoms. Many people will not have symptoms, and so that we consider them infectious one to two days before they test positive. And then they stay contagious through about day three, four, and five. And so that's why this new five-day guidance has come about. That's not to say that everybody is completely done with being infectious at day five. There are people who will have a tail end day six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. That's where you see the guidance for returning to activities at day five if you're feeling well, because most of that transmission risk has passed, but be really, really extra good about masking for days six through 10 as you go back to your activities. And so that's, again, that's partly virus behavior. It's also partly just to lessen the burden of all those days, missed days of school, potentially missed days of work, and the Centers for Disease Control was upfront about that. So that's what to do if you're sick or test positive. Quarantine, in public health lingo, is when you are, you're well, you feel fine, but you understand that you've been exposed to the virus. And so this is the notion that you also withdraw and you go home and stay home for five days while you wait for symptoms, and you ideally get tested to see if you in fact have been infected from your exposure. I will just say that quarantine recommendations relies on people being identified as having had an exposure. That relies on contact tracing, which we know is under stress. So that function is under stress because of the volume of cases. But as that process plays out, and we decide if someone really does need to go home and wait to develop symptoms, wait to have a test to be cleared back to school, you see here that we do actually differentiate based on vaccine status. So if you are completely up to date, if you are eligible for your booster and you've had it, you don't need to quarantine after an exposure. If you're five to 17 years old and you've had your initial first two doses of COVID vaccine, you're also considered up to date. You do not have to go home, but you do need to wear a mask because now you've had a known exposure. You just want to take that extra care, that extra level of precaution by being sure you're really good about masking for those 10 days after the exposure, and you do want to go get a test in case you have a mild infection that might not otherwise show up as symptoms that would prompt you to stay home. It gets a bit more complicated as you start to parse people's vaccine status. So if you have not had a booster, if you're five to 17 years old, have not had the vaccine series, or you have only had one of the two, then you want to be at home for those first five days. And then after that, if you're feeling well, hopefully you're able to get tested. If you can, make sure you're negative, and then again, come back and again, pay extra attention to masking. The bottom line here is that you see these shortened periods where people are allowed to go back to their activities. There is still some risk there, and Centers for Disease Control has... There is still some risk there, and Centers for Disease Control has put forward kind of a model where you manage that extra risk by just being really good at wearing a well-fitting mask and getting tested if you can, to make sure that you shouldn't otherwise be at home waiting until you're less infectious. So it's a lot of information. If you have questions, I'm sure we'll be talking more in the days to come. I do just want to say that the Omicron response is going to be difficult. It is not going to be perfect. And we are in a period of rapid change and having to adapt to the reality of how this virus behaves. So again, just really appreciate your time and attention tonight. Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much for those important updates.
And again, I just want to say thank you. You guys are amazing, and you always present such clear information. And thank you. It helps us as we make these difficult decisions.
Well, directors, that is the last slide on the presentation here. So I do want to turn it over to you, particularly if you have any questions for our public health leaders, before they leave us for the evening.
I do have a question regarding contact tracing. So I think it's been your guidance, Dr. Vines, that we've suspended attempts at contact tracing for adults. But I think it is still our practice within PPS to try to do that with students. Can you comment on that, or can our staff tell us if our own guidance internally is shifting?
Sure. I'll take a first stab at it, and then, Dr. Vines, you can maybe add to it. So we are in regular communication with our public health officials. We actually met this morning and had this exact conversation. So we are looking at contact tracing at K-12 levels right now. It's going to, it's a number of conversations that we're having with state leaders, local public health leaders, and we look forward to making a quick decision here in the next few days.
Do you have any guidance you want to share on that, as it pertains to our under-18-year-olds in our school environments? Dr. Vines?
I think I will say, things are in flux. And again, the contact tracing function is under stress. I think the real prevention benefit is keeping kids and staff home who are sick, home who are test positive. The difficulty when the contact tracing piece is stressed is that we're not keeping peace with the virus, and our teams are simply unable to get those notifications to people to stay home and to wait out their period. So this is something that we're going to be looking at really closely to figure out what is the best use of the resources that we have that's going to minimize. We're never going to eliminate the risk of COVID in our schools, but what's going to minimize the risk and keep kids in school in-person learning?
So just a quick opportunity for a public service announcement. How do families sign up for the vaccine clinics at our schools that we mentioned in one of the slides?
So those clinics are first and foremost for the school community. So we've been actively providing posters, or making posters available across the schools. If folks go to our website, pps.net, folks can see more information about times. There is no sign up. It is first come, first served.
Okay. Are we, I just want to be clear, are we welcoming students from throughout the district to those, or are we asking families to sort of hold off if it's not at your?
No. At this point, anybody, I mean, what we do, these clinics are open for three or four hours. The first two hours or so are for that specific school community, and it's open to the broader community.
That's helpful. Thank you.
I had a quick comment, and the good news is that we've kind of done this transitioning before, and the bad news is it's not an ideal situation. And I had a question about tests. You might have mentioned multitasking, but what is our district capacity to offer tests at the building level?
Great question. So as you know, the testing programs across the country are strained as well, right? It's difficult to come by for individuals and institutions. Luckily, we are working closely with our state officials and our local officials. We do have, you know, tests available for our weekly asymptomatic and symptomatic screening testing program, as well as our staff program that we have here at the BESC. So last, for example, last week, as part of our screening testing program, again, in partnership with OHSU and OHA, close to 5,000 students came back, or got tested, you know, as part of the screening program. So we are actively testing students across our system, right, through the variety of programs that our public health officials like OHA and OHSU provide.
Dr. Vines, you had mentioned, first of all, I want to say thank you for coming out and sharing. I appreciate it. You mentioned in your report just now that if you've been vaccinated and, you know, you come into contact with somebody that you don't need to quarantine and different things. But down at the bottom of the screen, because it gets skipped over so often, how do you design, because you said, "if you feel well." And then it says, "if you have symptoms." So I think we really need to be clear about what those symptoms should be, or what those symptoms look like. And if you have symptoms, does that change your five-day status or whatever? So if we could be clear and clean that up so that people truly understand, "I've been vaccinated. I've been vaccinated, but that didn't stop me from getting COVID. And it didn't stop me from getting symptoms, and it didn't stop me from feeling weak for about 10 to 15 days." So can we get real clear on that for those that say, "I've been vaccinated. I don't need to do anything. I can stay in the building."
Thank you. Yeah, it's a great point that staying home when sick, that is across the board. That is regardless of your vaccine status. That is regardless of whether you've had a known exposure. If you are unwell, you should not be around other people. We can get you lists of symptoms. And again, no system is going to be perfect, because a lot of the symptoms of COVID are going to be common symptoms that people have. So we can't, again, we can't eliminate the risk. We have to rely on people to decide for themselves, "Am I sick? You know, do I have something else? Do I have COVID?" That part will be imperfect, but you're absolutely right, that people who are vaccinated can and will get sick with Omicron, and they will need to absolutely stay home, even if they say they are vaccinated and boosted and everything. Again, stay home if you're sick.
Do some of those symptoms include a scratchy throat, a cough, nasal congestion, body aches? So a lot of things that would be also coincide with a basic common cold, because a lot of people are saying, "I don't have COVID. I just got a cold." But all the symptoms are similar. So can you unpack that a little bit? I really just want to get down to the brass tacks. Let's get real clear about what it is we're saying, because there's a misunderstanding, it seems, around when I should come to school and when I should stay home or do different things.
Yeah, thanks for the chance to clarify. These are common symptoms, right? So COVID and Omicron, common symptoms, headache, scratchy throat, runny nose, cough. You may have a fever, fatigue, so feeling tired, body aches, muscle aches. These are all common symptoms. People are going to have to be watching themselves to determine, you know, are these newer, different symptoms for me? Am I unwell? If the answer is yes, they should be home, regardless of their status. I don't know that we can account for every single possible symptom. Again, it's going to be imperfect, because our biology and our bodies don't always follow the rules. But we can really impress on people that if you are unwell, you should not be in school until you are feeling well.
So just to build on Director Green's questions, because it seems like this is where testing is the key thing. So you can have symptoms. So we had a mini COVID outbreak among our extended family, and people had its range, they've all been vaccinated, so it ranged between like a cold to a flu. And so the people who had colds, like in two days, they were fine. But if you didn't have access to a test and you felt fine, and you thought you had a cold but you really had COVID, you might be out for three days, you know, transmitting it still, because you have COVID versus a cold, but you never got the test because tests are in short supply. I'm wondering if you have any insights into when the flow or the pipeline of tests is going to arrive in states? I know I talked to Choka Fory this morning about this, and I know it's not a county responsibility, but it's really the federal government and state level. I'm curious, like where you see that pipeline opening, because that does seem like that gives a more definitive answer to people who are not sure whether they have the cold or the flu, which may be fine for some people, but other people, it could put them in the hospital if they get transmitted.
I can say a few words about what I know in terms of the state ordering of the at-home test kits. We had updated conversations with the state yesterday, and we expect things to start flowing next week. Again, the pipeline for all of this is unpredictable, so I can't make any promises of it absolutely happening, but that is what is being expected and what we're planning for. So we hope that that will be a much-needed tool in our public health toolbox that'll be a little bit more readily available for folks to address the various issues that you just discussed. And I think many folks know that there are quite a few pathways that these tests are coming through, directly to education partners, healthcare hospitals, community-based agencies, local public health authorities, homeless services. There are several different pathways that these tests are going to be distributed.
I have one quick question. I guess I have to leave. My question is, I know a couple people who have taken a rapid test and then take a PCR test, but their rapid test came back negative, so they were still hanging out with people. But then their PCR test came back positive, so I was just wondering if you could briefly describe like the difference between the two tests?
Yeah, thanks for that question. So a lot of the rapid tests are antigen tests, so they're actually looking for pieces of the virus itself inside your nose. They're looking for virus proteins. And in general, the thinking is that you have to have enough virus in your nose to make that test positive, that it's probably, that a positive test is probably a good marker that you not only have COVID, but you can probably spread COVID. The PCR test is very good at picking up even little pieces of virus. So this may be virus that can't infect anyone else, and it's just in pieces, kind of hanging around still in your nose. The PCR test is very good at picking up even those little pieces, and so the PCR test can stay positive for a long time after someone is considered no longer infectious. In general, people tend to think of the antigen test as a good marker, not just of infection, but also that you can potentially transmit. So having said all of that, no medical test is perfect. So antigen tests will miss some people, PCR tests will miss some people. So I think my last point would be, if you have even a single positive test, you don't want to start shopping around tests. If you have a positive test, you're positive, and you should act accordingly, even if you're tempted to go and get another test that then is negative. You should consider yourself infected.
I have a question for our own team.
Sorry. Before that, I do want to let our public health officials go, because I could tell you that they're working equally as hard as many of us, so I'm sure they want to spend some time with their families. So any other questions before we let them go?
I just had, I have one last one. I'm going to have a similar question for PPS staff, but since you have, in your purview, more than one district, since Multnomah County has multiple districts, and I know that different districts are, you know, in different ways, having different experiences with Omicron, I'm wondering what you're seeing. Are there any insights that you want to share, like across districts, that things that are effective strategies, or things that we should just keep top of mind, just from your looking at the, at multiple districts and what's happening?
I mean, I can give just a brief perspective. I, you know, have the honor and privilege of meeting with many of your staff and other district staff every Friday, and people are extremely creative about implementing and maintaining the Swiss cheese model with the layered prevention strategies. I think that where we are right now, the common challenge is, just as Dr. Vines mentioned, the strain that folks are feeling in terms of contact tracing, and honestly, with implementation of tests to stay. So I think all of this is a balancing act, like I said, and we work weekly with school districts to try and balance that out based on the science that we're learning, which is real-time, which is, I know, very stressful. That's why I prefaced us being here by just really, you know, acknowledging that it's very hard to integrate our learnings and pivot, especially with systems this large. But, you know, like I said, folks are being extremely creative and helping to maintain some of those consistent or prevention strategies that we know work, that Dr. Vines went through, particularly vaccination, masking, and staying home when you're sick. I mean, those are really tried and true. So, but again, want to just acknowledge what a stress it is for a systems pivot. But I think, like I said, I have a child who's in PPS schools, and I can't believe the level of work that is being done that is, you know, protecting students, staff, and the larger community.
Thank you so much for being here. I appreciate your time and effort, knowing that you're working very long days, I imagine.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
So my question was, with the, you know, the Multnomah County guidance that just shifted from 10 to five days isolation, in your preamble, you said, "It takes a little while to work with our building leaders to make those kind of changes." When will we see that shift on the ground?
Yeah, on the ground, we hope to implement that on Tuesday, so the day after holiday, just to give you a sense of what's going to happen between now and then. So again, a week from today. On Thursday, we meet with our site administrators to discuss and go over the new protocols between today, this morning, and tomorrow, we are updating our standard operating procedures to make sure that they're aligned and coherent across the system. And so after the SOPs, again, we will do a meeting with our site administrators, make sure that they have the tools and the resources needing to implement this new transition. And then, you know, they have to disseminate that information to their staff, which will most likely take place, you know, Friday for a Tuesday implementation. So can it give you a sense of what that looks like in real time?
I have a quick question. I was really struck by the list of schools that are transitioning to temporary distance learning, and noted that 100% of those are on the east side of the river. Most of them, and the bulk of the ones that are closing are in north and northeast Portland. And I would just request that we, I'm wondering if we have a mapping session that can show those schools on a map when it comes time to budget time, because those schools reflect kids that have higher poverty rates, more languages spoken, more free and reduced lunch. In other words, they're our, you know, our most vulnerable students. I would just like to see that visual representation, because I think it's stark, and we know that the COVID exacerbates these inequities, and so seeing it on a map might give us some direction in terms of where we want to focus our additional resources.
I appreciate you, Chair, pointing out what has been really vaccine troubling, a lot of deep conversations that we've been having as a senior staff, even in our emergency operations center, even when you saw staff race up there, because the data spiked in a few schools. And so you're going to see some further communications, probably. But the conversation has been, we know that not all communities have been impacted similarly. There's been disproportionate impacts. You know, vax rates aren't the same across zip codes. We know that some of our schools have all of, you know, many other additional challenges. So we're trying to shore up and prioritize not having to have a cluster of schools as much as possible. We can certainly map them, especially if any additional schools need to be mapped. So we're trying to apply that lens, and as we apply remedies and strategize how to do this. But as you know, we're going to have ground to make up, and I do hope that we prioritize additional supports and learning time that really is going to be required as this, hopefully we start to see the other side of this pandemic.
Excellent. And I also trust and know in my heart that you bring that lens to the work. So I know anything I say is not news to you. I wanted to just put it out on the table. Do we have any other comments?
I do. I do. But I can wait, because I've got like three of them listed.
Go for it.
Okay. Director Green? And then we'll go Director Constance.
I'm trying. So the, I'm a, I got them listed, so I can just read them out, and then I can follow along how we get them done. My first initial question is, what is our benchmark when it comes to closing schools? And that's something that I our benchmark when it comes to closing schools? And I, that's something that I posed to Jonathan earlier because I didn't want to, I don't want to just throw him out there, but I want to give him the chance to think about it and process it. And he may say, Herman, stop. We don't have one. It's too much. But I'm gonna let him say that, whatever. The, my next question is, because we're doing schools, we're doing athletics, and I appreciate us wanting to allow athletics to go, but it also brings about a flurry and litany of questions that I have. So, with that being said, how are we supporting the schools where we have teams, where the entire team has already been impacted by COVID-19? So, we're saying we're gonna come back and sports are in play, but if you got an entire team where there's no sports, how are we supporting that team?
Quarantine.
Exactly. And so, but then that means their schedule. And so, I'm just gonna keep going down.
Sorry, so if they're, why are they quarantined?
COVID-19.
Okay.
This is-
So, they were, the basketball team was infected?
An entire basketball team. Every, every one of my questions listed is COVID-19.
Okay.
So, if I don't say it, it's COVID-19. And so, the entire basketball team has been infected by COVID-19. The entire wrestling team has been infected by COVID-19. And so, they have to play somebody. Have, are we waiting to forfeit? And is that what it's looking like? Are we saying we don't want to forfeit? Are we rescheduling? How, and then my next question follows up with that is, how are we communicating with the families of those impacted, as well as the other teams and families that they were playing against when we find out that there was a positive case? So, with, give you an example. If Team A plays Team B on Friday, and then on Saturday, we find out that somebody from Team A was positive for COVID-19, that means everybody on that team was now potentially impacted or affected by this, the transmission, especially given the extremely rapid transmission rate that we know that Omariyan has, and that it doesn't, it moves beyond all the six feet and all of that. It can be in the air. These are black people. We just give it new names. And so, but it's out there. And so, what are we doing? How are we reaching out to that, to not just the player, but everybody that was on the floor with the player, all the teams that were on the bench with the player? And then what's the turnaround time on that? So, because, and this is important, it's extremely important, because if we find out on Friday, in the days that they were the height of their transmission possibly, if we're not communicating right away, then you've got 15, 30 players potentially that are out spreading a virus, and who's going to tell them that they were, and then what does that look like? And so, that was that. And then my last question, I'm gonna just stop because I feel like I-
That was about the four.
I know, I said three because I was like, I'm looking at that and I said, I said three. One, this one don't get to go.
All right, Director Green, we'll take, we'll take those two. Dr. Adams will take the first one. I'll take the second one. How about that?
You asked about a data point or a threshold, and there really isn't one single threshold. We're looking at all of those various data points that I mentioned earlier, staff callouts, how many of those callouts are unfilled, the absence rate of students in the building, because what we're seeing is, as students are absent, then we see staff absences increasing as well. And so, we're looking at, it's not one point or another, it's really a matrix of data. And if you could imagine a scorecard with red, green, and yellow, it's more like we're looking at dozens of data points, and they all have a particular color, and we're thinking about what they all mean and what those thresholds say for what's going on in the ground in that school. And then we have a conversation with the principal, and then we make a decision when we feel like we can no longer offer safely in-person instruction.
And so, regarding your second question, I think it's an important question, and I think you're hinting at a few things. So, over the, over the winter break, we did have a number of basketball teams who participated in a number of basketball tournaments here and across the country. And what we saw is that during these tournaments, there were a number of staff and students that got contacted COVID. And so, you know, the reality and what we know from public health is that, that, you know, these types of activities increase the risk of COVID-19. I mean, that's just a part of the reality, right, of folks sweating and moving around and all of that. So, I just wanted to kind of contextualize, I think, your reference point, that we have seen an increase of basketball teams, in particular, being a whole team isolated or quarantined, I apologize, as a result of COVID-19. As was shared by Dr. Vines, contact tracing at this moment today, as a result of the Omicron surge, is becoming very difficult, right? Because you can all but assume that we're all close contacts with someone who is positive or has been exposed recently to COVID-19, just the way that, in which Omicron is spreading and the way that, the type of infection that it is. And so, it is making it difficult. So, with these in particular, you know, I would say prior to the deltas, during the Delta surge in the fall and probably in December, you know, contact tracing, contact tracing is done. It has been a taxing exercise for staff. So, you can imagine school principals, coaches, teachers, frontline staff, you know, working over the weekends, making calls to parents, making calls to students, looking at charts, getting a sense of the picture, right? Contact tracing is about getting a sense of the picture of when this exposure happened, you know, who was in the, who was in the proximity? How close were they? So, it's an investigation, if you will, about what happened. Again, the challenge right now with Omicron is that that's becoming difficult when, you know, just us all being in close proximity, right? The chances of us being close contact is greater. And so, I gave you an answer that's a non-answer because I think the, as Dr. Vines indicated, the public health process for contact tracing is becoming very challenging today. So, my answer today is different from my answer a month ago, when I would have told you what I just told you about contact tracing being an investigative process that is led by our MESD nurses, right, in the close partnership with our principals and the like.
I do hear you, and I respect that answer because I think I knew going in that we don't really have a solid, a solid, we're going to be able to get it out. My question, the reason that I was bringing this up, though, is because from a perspective of being responsible, talking about being responsible. And when you said activities like this, I'm presuming that you're talking about our extracurricular activities. We're talking about sports. You're going to be sweating. You're running up and down the floor. You're touching the same ball. You're passing the same ball. In wrestling, you're actually grabbing one another and you're, you're in contact with one another. And someone, someone says that I'm not feeling well. At what point is the responsible thing as a coach to say, I'm pulling my team without reprimand versus being like, well, you better find someone to play because the show must go on? At some point, we have to be responsible and recognize that if we continue to push this, then we are propelling the transmission of this, of this virus. We are causing the spread. We are endangering the lives of young people because we're telling them, we need you to get out there, hustle through it, be strong, you can make it, and it doesn't work the same. So-
Yeah, I appreciate your comment. I mean, what I would, what I would say to that is, you know, we all have an individual responsibility to protect ourselves and each other from this pandemic, right, from COVID-19. So, that is absolutely clear, whether you're an adult, whether you're a student, right? It's important to wear your mask, to inform others, to stay home when you're sick, right? Like that, those are, you know, very important on the individual level. And at the collective level, right, like, you know, last week, the state of Oregon, OHA, and the Department of Education released updated guidance. And they said, look, you can pause extracurriculars or you can create mitigating, or layers of mitigation to protect against COVID-19. And we chose the latter, right? Because, or we chose to keep extracurriculars because as educators, we're trying to balance, the reality is that we're trying to balance what we're listening and hearing from public health with what we're also hearing from public health, that students need to be in schools, students need to be activated and engaged in extracurricular activities. So, you know, this is what I said earlier to someone. I think if, you know, if society can remain open, our schools can remain open, and our extracurricular activities can remain open.
And I just also want to remind us that extracurriculars also include things like the robotics team, the high school play, the band. And so, yes, there's sports, which is, but there are all sorts of other things. And I think, you know, what we've seen is that closure of those extracurricular activities, closure of in-person instruction has had a hugely detrimental public health impact on students. So, I think it's just what Chief Garcia was saying. It's weighing, like, where can we protect our students? Where's the line? And what are we protecting them from? And that's, I think, the continued struggle that we're going to have to take on as a board and as a staff, as we try to discern exactly what, you know, our public health experts said, how do we keep our kids safe in all the ranges of what that safety means?
I guess I have a follow-up question to what Director Green was asking. So, if our number one priority is to keep students in five days of school, when I heard that we were allowing extracurriculars to proceed even if schools were closed, I guess that kind of seems in contradiction to prioritizing five days of in-person instruction.
Can you say more about that? What do you mean?
Yeah, so if there's enough community spread, teachers that have COVID, students that have COVID, I guess it would make sense to me that to limit the spread of more COVID, we would be closing all activities, including in-person school. So, if we're keeping activities open, are we not like perpetuating the spread of COVID-19?
Yeah, I mean, what I'll say to that is, public health has not made a decision to close supermarkets, schools, bars, restaurants. Public health has not made that decision. I think as educators, as public school educators, what we know is that our students need access to school, access to extracurriculars, access to activities, and that's what's driving us. That's our leading driver in these decisions.
Okay, so, sorry, last follow-up. What data, I guess, did you guys rely on to choose to not follow the guidance from ODE and OHA to close extracurriculars? Or I guess choose to-
That's incorrect, Jackson. I just want to say that the ODE guidance said you can either close extracurriculars or continue extracurriculars with mitigation efforts. So, it was a sentence, it was one sentence that had both options in it. So, I just want to be really clear because I've had this question from other people. We are in compliance with ODE. We're just in compliance with the second clause of the first sentence.
Yeah, that's correct. And I think it's also important to note that, you know, the state of Oregon is really diverse, right, in thought, in opinion around, you know, the way that we should mitigate the spread of COVID-19. And I, and I hear and I feel for our state leaders that that makes it difficult to make, you know, decisions. And so, I think I can see the world in which they had to say, you know, you either pause extracurricular or you create some mitigating strategies to protect your students. Luckily, here in Portland Public Schools, we mitigate, we've continued to mitigate and provide those health and safety measures all along. And so, when it came down to it, you know, it was a pretty simple decision that we'll continue to provide the rigor of health and safety measures that we've been providing from day one. And hopefully, you know, that message from our state leaders is resonating, you know, with our counterparts across the region, across the state.
May I interject here? Director Konstant, you had a comment. Director Brum Edwards had a comment. And I'd like to move us ahead in the agenda so we can stay on time, so we can recognize everybody's tiredness.
Thank you. Just before we leave, the topic of contact tracing, I think it's been pretty well established that the, our guidance there is outdated or it's just no longer really relevant, given the characteristics of Omicron. And so, I want to be explicit about saying it has a really serious effect on our students. We have a lot of students excluded from school due to exposure and contact tracing. We're in a pickle because we don't have the ability to implement test to stay as an institution because we don't have the supply. But, you know, I'm hearing here a recognition that that's no longer really, has a rightful spot in our playbook. So, the sooner we move past that, I think the better because we have kids being excluded for, you know, two weeks of school.
So, Director Konstant, I appreciate that. I will say, you know, we, in our conversations with public health this morning, we did share, you know, and what's clear is that contact tracing at the county level and across the region has all but ceased, right? Again, and Dr. Vines alluded to that today. What hasn't shifted is the guidance to K-12, right? So, I just want to be absolutely clear that guidance has not been provided to K-12 saying contact tracing needs to stop. However, like I said earlier, our conversations right now give us some indication that we're moving in that direction, but it's going to require a series of discussions up and down the, with the state, with our state leaders, our public health leaders here at the local region as well.
Okay, so we won't make that decision until we have further external guidance specifically on contact.
Correct. And our expectation is to get guidance this week.
Thanks for that clarification.
Quick question. Kind of going back to the Chromebooks piece. I know we're giving all the kids a Chromebook. Do they, do that come with access to Wi-Fi as well?
Great question. So, a number of these Chromebooks that we purchase as an organization, and Don, correct me if I'm wrong, do have enabled Wi-Fi already in them. So, that's a bonus. What we also know is that as these schools are going into distance learning, we have deployed hotspots and again are working very closely with our administrators to determine the number of hotspots that are needed at each particular school to provide those as a resource.
So, seven of the schools that are participating in the VILLS program have Chromebooks that are fully LTE-enabled. The majority of the one-to-one schools that we distributed in October and the ones that are in the PK2 are not. We still have almost 3,000, 2,600 hotspots out available in students' hands from CDL. We still have about another 2,600 available to deliver to students should we need, and we're working with our partners right now to see how quickly we can turn around additional hotspots if it's needed.
Chief Wolf just used an acronym, VILLS. He was referring to our Verizon. We were selected on a grant to take many of our schools one-to-one, and those are the devices that came more ably equipped.
Yes, Verizon Innovative Learning Schools. Forgive me for, thank you, Superintendent.
Excellent. Did that answer your question, Director Hollins? Director Brum Edwards?
So, I have just a series, but I think most of them are relatively short questions. And this, I think, gets mostly into the dashboard and sort of data. Earlier, we were told that just because of the surge, MESD was having a hard time keeping, getting the backlog of reported cases uploaded. So, short question, the answer needed, just, are we updated or when do we expect that to happen?
Our dashboard is lagging because of that backlog and the strain on contact tracing and both getting the data entered. The, our MESD nurses are also facing staffing shortages. So, if you can imagine, some of the cases get entered by school-based personnel, some of the cases get entered by MESD nurses.
So, I guess mainly, I'm not, it's not good or bad. I'm just, so is it going to continue to lag because of those factors? So, we should just keep that in mind. So, if somebody's looking at it, it's like, hey, how come they transitioned to CDL because it doesn't look that bad, but we have a different picture?
Right. It will continue to lag. What we are, what we've stood up as a part of EOC, Emergency Operations Center, is we have asked building administrators to at least hand-enter the count of their backlog. So, we have more of a feel for what is actually happening in the schoolhouse.
Great. I just think that's an important point because some people are looking at the dashboard thinking, like, what's the issue? And it's, there's a data lag issue that's, that you all have visibility to that we don't have. So, then I have another question I'm confused about, and I think from talking to parents, they are too, is, so when we have staff out, it looked like that we don't know whether they're out because of COVID or for some other reason. And the question is, if they're out for COVID, wouldn't we expected them then be like they're going to be out for five days because of the guidance? And if we're moving to CDL, sorry, this is a multi-question, but if we move to CDL then, or comprehensive distance learning, and they've got COVID, we're not expecting them to teach? And if we have a sub shortage, who is teaching the students in CDL if we don't have subs and- have subs and the staff are out, which is why we've moved to CDL?
That's the key question we've been asking ourselves, our Chief of HR.
I'm just curious, because, well, just like, just moving to CDL, comprehensive distance learning, doesn't seem to solve the problem unless we're giving kids less instruction.
I can answer that on a couple of different levels. What we can predict about why teachers are out right now and need substitutes for in-person versus remote, and what we have started seeing in those few schools that have moved to temporary distance learning, so what we're actually experiencing there. So, there are people who are out because they are very ill and they wouldn't be able to teach from any location in any condition because they are too sick to teach. And then, we have a very assertive self-screening symptom checklist as one of our very important layers of mitigation, which means if you have symptoms on that checklist, you may not be experiencing a great deal of discomfort, but you are excluded from being around other people and from coming onto a school campus. There's a large number of people in that category. We understand anecdotally, we don't have a reporting system that we, that, where people say, this is the level of my symptom. Our information about why, the basis for people's absences is limited to, like, illness and the approved absences. That really doesn't get updated until payroll gets run, right? So, it's just the entry to ask for a substitute teacher. That's limited information, because we haven't needed to have much more information than that. So, what we know when we...
Just, I'm sorry, I'm confused about that, because if, if we did have contact tracing, and I know that, like, we're beyond that, but wouldn't if somebody or any staff person were calling in sick or a student with an absent, they would, and they had a positive COVID test, wasn't the protocol that they reported that they had a positive COVID test and then so we can do contact tracing? Is that, is that just not happening anymore?
Yeah, so, every time there is, an employee reports a positive COVID test, that ends up into the process that Dr. Adams referred to in the SCIF, which generates the, that's a form, the, that I couldn't tell you what the acronym means, that generates the contact tracing process. So, but there are, there is a lack of availability for tests, and also, once you have symptoms, the testing time periods, right, aren't necessarily that day. They're, so, the lack of availability for tests means there are a lot of people with symptoms, and we don't know whether or not they are COVID-positive, or they have the flu, or cold, or allergies, or other reasons why they might have symptoms.
I thought we were running a staff, like, if somebody had a symptom now, they can come to BESC several times a day and get a test?
No.
No?
No, that's, if, if you have symptoms, you are not allowed to come onto campus or onto any, into any of our office buildings. If you are exposed, if you've had an exposure to COVID and you are asymptomatic, we are running a testing site here for those, in those circumstances. If you are onsite and you develop symptoms, students and staff may go and get a symptomatic rapid test. So, what we know then is that employees who aren't allowed to come onto campus, if they are following the protocols as we request them to do, may be well enough and are typically well enough to be able to work remotely, because they're not exposing anybody. What we've seen in the few schools that have been in temporary distance learning today and yesterday is that teacher, that the need for subs has dropped dramatically, I believe, down to two in one building, in one building, three, something along those lines. So, it's, it changes dramatically our ability to staff in remote.
And I would just say, anecdotally, my daughter's math teacher, even though she was out with COVID at the beginning of the semester, she was still making videos for the class. So, she was taking sick time, wasn't actually teaching, and was still delivering content. So, I think there are some teachers who can make video or do online that wouldn't be able to be in a classroom. But, that's a great question, Director Brum Edwards.
But I think what you just heard from Chief Reese is, not only does it give, relieve the strain on the system, but the students themselves are getting the benefit of their actual teacher maintaining a continuity of learning there in these temporary circumstances.
So, is that making the case for the continuity of learning in a CDL when you have a high number of staff cases?
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
I said, does that make the case for moving to comprehensive distance learning, for if you want to have comprehensive instruction or continuity of instruction to be doing these breaks? So, I'm just trying to reconcile the in-person with the continuity of instruction. So, it's have a short-term break of in-person so that the people can recover and then shifting back in? Is that, and that, that's how the district's theory of action is, that's how we're having continuity of instruction?
Yes.
Versus maybe a building filled with subs who may or may not be able to deliver?
Sure. What we know is that our, typically, we have a substitute need around this time of year as we compare it to prior years, a couple hundred, between two, you know, less than 300 subs at any given day, and we're usually able to fill almost every single one of those sub requests. Right now, that need is pushing up to 400 every day, and our, the availability of subs, which is normally over 900, right now is right around 650. So, we have particularly diminished capacity, excuse me. And in addition to the diminished capacity, what we have also seen is, we know that the trusted relationships that develop between our school staff and our teachers with our students is critically important to making a building run, making a classroom run, classroom management, school climate. And replacing a large portion of the staff, even with very highly skilled and qualified substitute teachers, has a significant impact on student engagement, on the climate in a building, on classroom and behavioral management, and on the ability of a school to run. So, that is one of the, when Dr. Adams and Chief Garcia are talking about the matrix, that's one of the things that we are looking at, is what, who are strangers in the building? And we've heard from principals about that as well.
So, there is, there is a complexity of factors to consider. It'd be nice to just say, this is the uniform approach, but it just, it varies from building to building and the reasons of why, why an educator might need to call out. And this is why speaking with our building principals has been really invaluable, because they'll have those, a better insight and help us make those kinds of decisions.
Thank you so much. I'm going to move us along now. Staff, I appreciate your, your diligence in working on this and solving for things that we don't even know to solve for yet. And so, we can move to our, our next item. I'd also like to ask the board for some grace in wrapping up our meeting after this update, and that means we would be, we would be saving the rest of our agenda for another meeting, and that would be our first reading of the policies and, and our board and conference reports, out of just extreme care for everybody in the room tonight. Saw one person nodding.
I just have, I have a question about one of the policies and whether, I don't know, this is a question for student rep, Weinberg, or Liz Large, about whether we can, because it deals with the elections of the representative, whether we need to get the 21-day clock ticking or whether we can wait to the next meeting, have the 21-day clock tick and pass it again? Just want to make sure that we don't run into the spring student elections.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I can do, that I know the exact dates and can do the precise math. I would say as a general proposition, if there's any substantive amendment in the middle of that process that then requires an additional 21 days, you, the prudent advice would be to get it moving so that you have time to absorb any amendments that might come in the 21-day period between first and second reading.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, because we're starting to communicate with administration around getting elections started, because it is a long process to get to the election at individual schools.
So, Chair to Pass, maybe I'll suggest if we take that first reading of the policy, which I think we can do quickly, and get, get the clock started. And then, and then I guess I would ask, on the Harriet Tubman Middle School, is there anything urgent on that, or can that wait until the next board meeting?
You know, I would say on the Harriet Tubman, I think everybody's getting briefings. Yes. I mean, everybody's had briefings, I think, or they could get them, and the presentation's posted also, so.
My, my recommendation was to get this update on Harriet Tubman relocation and wrap up that policy.
Gotcha.
And then adjourn, if that makes, does that make sense? So, pretty much removing anything that isn't time urgent.
I do have, I can keep my report to three slides, but I do have an important news flash to share with the board.
Thank you.
Even though we're live.
Absolutely.
You can see the staff scrambling. There's a reason for it.
Okay, absolutely. That would be great. And then, we'll hold off on conference and committee reports.
Could I have one minute to do my report? I can keep it to one minute, promise.
Absolutely. We've got, we've got one minute plus three minutes. We've got four minutes. Do you want to go ahead?
I'm going to be really brief, because I've already talked with staff about most of these things, but just being conscious of, as students are moving back to CDL, there was a lot of harm done to students while they're in CDL, losing out on that in-person instruction, being isolated. We're rehashing all of that in the temporary distance learning. Also, there's a need for guidance around how to conduct instruction during distance learning. A lot of teachers have varying lengths of class time and then say, okay, that's it for today. So, we have odd 30-minute, 25-minute breaks within the day, which isn't very conducive to do anything. And also, we're just looking for information on finals and in the near future, prom, and other dances, I guess.
Thank you. That's noted, and feel particularly for seniors this year. Superintendent Guerrero?
Yes, I'll go ahead and jump in, because we said three minutes, and so...
You could have four.
Didn't have, didn't take a moment to say Happy New Year, so, feliz año nuevo, directors. And really, I'll just keep it to a couple of appreciations and important news item, and I'm glad that we preserved the bulk of the time this evening for a school update, a school operations update. Hopefully, you heard some of those important variables that we're wrestling with right now, that we're tracking. Just kudos to our EOC. They started early this morning. They've met six times throughout the day, including during this meeting, to really look at these factors across the school portfolio. I can tell you, there's extraordinary measures. I'm reading unscripted here, so, we're going through extraordinary measures to really try to preserve, especially our youngest grades in schools, open as much as possible. But, tracking staffing absences, it shifts on the hour. And so, what we noted this evening is a need, and the announcement will be, go out any minute, and families' inbox is the need to take Jefferson High School to transition them to distance learning. There's just an unsustainable core of staff absences there. So, I wanted to make sure and share that, and I want to thank the EOC for their work. There's a whole group of staff behind, even the senior staff that you saw here this evening. Thank you, Jonathan, for spending your birthday with us tonight. And then, just two more appreciations. One, you saw my announcement earlier regarding my appointment of our new deputy superintendent. Please, please come on up, Cheryl. Very proud to have her in this assignment. She comes very well-qualified. I think you saw my announcement that's been shared broadly with the community. We're really excited. I'm really excited to have her as a partner in this work. Reactions?
Oh, I'm just excited. I'm excited to, you know, continue to do the work I shared with my team, that this gives a great opportunity for me, not to step away from my role fully as a chief academic officer, although I will, but it gives me an opportunity to continue the work in academics and also bridge that work across the Office of Schools and the Office of Student Support Services, so that there's one aligned vision, goal, and practice to ensure that we're using one language to support the needs of our children, advance our, our teaching and learning practices, advance our practices around instructional leadership of our leaders within our schools, within our cohorts, and also looking deeply at our student populations that have unique needs. I think I've shared in my first time with you that I'm a special education teacher by nature, so I have just worked the full gamut, from student support services to supervising schools and principals, serving as a deputy, deputy chief of schools and chief academic officer. So, this is a wonderful opportunity to just bridge the work and continue under the leadership of Superintendent Guerrero and the vision of the strategic plan.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then, lastly, I know you're in a hurry, but for, for those folks who are tuned in, I want to make sure, maybe not everybody's aware, the month of January, why is my clicker not working? Terry, can you advance me a slide? There we go. The month of January is actually School Board Recognition Month, so, I want to make sure we recognize your dedication, your hard work as local school board members, so, thank you for your public service.
You can have five minutes.
Take your time.
You know, for folks that are tuned in, you see what our board is up to, but, you know, across the, you know, across the country, these elected positions, they really do play an important role in making sure a school system has a clearly articulated vision, that they convey the expectations for, for student performance, that we have ways to checking on that. We talked earlier about our assessments and our ongoing instructional work, making sure our resources are lined up to those priorities, and make sure that we create the conditions, the climate, the expectations that every one of our students, that we have high expectations and dreams for, that we want to see them have their dreams be realized. So, so with much appreciation for each of you directors, thank you for your service and dedication to the students and families of the Portland Public Schools. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you so much for your brevity and, and your sense of humor there. Thank you. Congratulations to everybody. That's, we're, we're service-oriented unpaid volunteers. We're going to move now to, for our last, I'm sorry, not our last item. I would do a staff or the Harriet Tubman relocation and then the first, okay.
I'll just do the first reading.
Get that moving. So, we'll hear, we'll get an update currently, right now, on the Harriet Tubman Middle School relocation, that we can excuse everybody, and then we'll go on to our final item.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for taking the time. We will, we will hope to be quick and brief. So, with this topic tonight, next slide. Oh, wait, I have the clicker down there.
It's not like we're in a hurry. It's, we're trying to be sensitive to staff that's working on their 12th hour. I'm happy to stay all night.
So, my name is Dan Young. I'm Chief Operating Officer, and I'm joined here tonight with our Director of Real Estate and Planning, Dana White. So, we are going to run through an overview of the Harriet Tubman Middle School relocation project. So, we know we don't have a lot of time, and this topic can get pretty deep and pretty detailed pretty quickly. So, our goals tonight are pretty simple. We want to provide a high-level overview of the topic, provide a status update of staff efforts to date, answer your questions, and we want to get some high-level board feedback that will help guide future efforts as we move forward. And to note, this is just the beginning of an ongoing conversation that we're going to be having with the board. We're going to get into all the details as we go forward and as we, of course, learn them, and including starting with an update at next week's Intergovernmental Committee meeting. So, let's start with a quick overview of the problem. ODA is planning to widen I-5 and move the freeway closer to Harriet Tubman Middle School. I presume there's no surprises there. This slide illustrates the schedule of I-5 construction as it... This slide illustrates the schedule of I-5 construction as it progresses in multiple phases immediately adjacent to Harriet Tubman. In general, it starts a little bit to the north and then moves closer to the school. The main takeaway from this page is that the biggest impact to the school will be during construction of the Elliott Viaduct. And this, this graphic here shows the viaduct a little more clearly. You're going to see just how close it gets to the school. It's kind of hard to see on that picture, but access to that construction site will be both from the, the north and west of the site and from the south. So it's really going to be starting to wrap around the school. So building the viaduct, it's going to be loud, it's going to be dirty, it's going to impact the teaching and learning environment of the school, and is planned to take place during normal school hours starting in 2027. So we want to move the Tubman students before then. We can think of the decision process in four phases. We are really somewhere about here, partially into discovery and starting and then get into criteria development. So to be sure, there's a lot more to come and board's feedback will inform the process. Okay, let's talk a little about site, staff efforts to date. So since roughly last summer, staff has been looking into potential options for relocation, and we've bifurcated the site evaluation discussion into two categories. One we call Category A, which is purchase of a new site and rebuilding a new school, and Category B, which is relocating utilizing existing PPS property. Both, both options have pluses and minuses, and this, of course, is not intended to be an exhaustive list. But one of the biggest benefits of Category A of purchasing a new site is that will not impact the feeder schools, the elementary schools, the feeder schools, or those patterns. And the challenge has been options are limited, but we'll get into that in just a minute. So staff, when we first started to look at this, our effort was to find a new site to purchase, and in doing so, we identified three simple criteria to filter potential properties, not unlike how someone might search the internet when they're looking for a new home. Criteria number one is location. We aim to find a site within the existing Tubman catchment area. A site within the catchment area would allow the Tubman community to stay intact, avoid reconfigure, reconfiguration of existing school boundaries, and hopefully alleviate concerns around access and enrollment changes. Criterion two was land area. Between six and nine acres allows adequate site for, for siting buildings, providing athletic and outdoor spaces, staff and community parking, bus circulation, and more. And whenever we show this, we always get the question of, can it be smaller? And certainly, you can, you can put a school on a smaller site than six acres, you just start to have trade-offs and have to choose between some of those site amenities. An example is Tubman. Tubman currently sits on three acres but has virtually no, no parking, no bus circulation, and limited outdoor space other than the park to the north. And number three is availability. Though we do not have yet specific timelines and decision milestones, we do know the viaduct construction will be impactful to student learning. It will start in 2027, as it's reported, and properties that will take years to plan and negotiate prior to designing construction, which also take years, are likely not viable A couple of quick definitions. A viable site is a site that has been thoroughly vetted and we are comfortable developing as a new middle school. We don't have any sites that we would call viable sites, that'll be down the road. Potentially viable site is one that appears to meet all or some of the criteria and may ultimately, ultimately become a viable site. And an unlikely viable site is one that doesn't appear to meet the criteria and isn't likely even, to meet the criteria even when significant trade-offs are considered. Here is a sampling of the, some of the sites that we have looked at. You can see the criteria across the columns at the top and a listing of the properties down the rows. Unfortunately, you will quickly notice that none of the properties we polled met our initial criteria. And to be, and to note, we weren't, you know, really strict and rigid when we were looking at sites. We looked at sites that were outside the catchment area if they were close. We looked at sites that were smaller than six acres, for example. But we did not find any sites that seemed to meet those criteria very well. So you have this document, I'll let you absorb it a little bit, and we can come back to it when we get to feedback and questions, too.
Maybe just for the sake, what's the PPA acronym for?
Portland Police Association.
Is that the one near the Boys and Girls Club or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so status for Category A is we're still looking. Our first cut didn't produce any clearly viable options, which is okay. We just know that we need to readjust. So next steps include staff's going to be re-reviewing options with a particular focus on some of the smaller sites. We're engaging with Portland Parks and Rec about potential use of parks property, and we're interested in exploring some other creative solutions that are out there. And in a bit, we're going to ask the board for some help and some guidance on how we might do that. Category B, so then alternate to buying a new site is, of course, utilizing existing property. PPS owns several parcels in the Tubman catchment area, including Tubman and four elementary schools. One potential relocation option is to convert one of the elementary schools into a middle school, modernizing that school, and improving the other remaining three elementary schools to support the K-5 students in that catchment area. The opportunities or benefits of Category B is increased enrollment at schools with capacity, potential expanded programming within those schools, needed capital improvements at multiple schools instead of just one, and retaining Tubman within the catchment area. This option, however, would of course be materially impactful to many students, families, and communities, and it's something that we've heard about in our community engagement meetings so far and something that if Jonathan's around, he'll talk about here in a little bit. Category B, so here's a list of owned properties within the catchment area, a couple of things to draw your eyes to. Starting at the bottom is a list of school properties that are not elementary schools, and we're more than happy to go into details and upcoming discussions about those, but for brevity tonight, all those schools have impediments to development in the near future, and that's why they are lower on the list, but that's something we can discuss more for certain. The four elementary schools are, that are listed above, and we also included some additional data in this table, including current utilization rates and building area. Overall utilization of these four schools hovers around 55%, and enrollment forecasts do not predict significant increases in the next 10 years. So in other words, from a space perspective, there appears to be enough area to accommodate the K-5 students, even if one of those schools is converted to a middle school. And there's a lot of data here, I'm going to keep moving along, but we can come back to this table when we get the questions.
And we also have it in our packets.
Even better. So current status of, of this category, staff is still looking into the feasibility of this option. It's still under consideration, and as the board knows, there's been no decision about this option or any other. And if we are to move forward, and there's, there's no clear side of which one would be the best, the best option. We do have our one asked for some, some board feedback tonight, and we'll get to that in just a moment. I believe Courtney Westling is here virtually.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. So why we're all here is that we have a rare opportunity during February session to potentially access resources to fund a relocation of Tubman. We have historic revenues in the state, we have resources available for a lot of things as a state, and so we're in close conversations with the governor's office, who has indicated that she wants the school to move. Her office has been, we've been meeting with her office somewhat regularly to brainstorm what a capital stack would look like, capital stack being what are the funding sources that could fund such a relocation. We've also been meeting with legislative leaders to share sort of early budget estimates on what it would cost to relocate under these two scenarios that Dan outlined. And then, of course, the session's coming up in a few weeks, and we want to have those conversations even more, you know, I think, dig a little deeper and, and really with the help of the governor's office and key legislators, make this happen. The trick, of course, is the timing. The timing of the session doesn't necessarily line up with the timing of having to make a decision. It's going to be, you know, it's going to take more time to have a robust, transparent process with our community. We've had initial meetings with the various families from the various schools that Dan mentioned, the, the catchment schools, and, you know, we're hearing loud and clear that they, you know, they don't love the idea of being displaced, obviously. That would be, you know, I think any family would have concerns about that. So there's just, there just needs to be a longer dialogue with our families and, as Dan outlined, a deeper dive into some of these additional opportunities, sites, and just looking further under the hood, see what might be possible. So it's, unfortunately, nothing ever works out with a bow on it where you can, the timing of the legislature would, would match up with the timing of the other side of the process, the identification of sites. But we're doing the best we can, and I think, I feel, you know, good that our legislators are open-minded to this. They, the conversations we've had so far, there's an understanding that this is a school that needs to move. And so we'll continue that work in the next few weeks as we head into February. And then I don't know if Jonathan's around, but I'm happy to also hit the community engagement slide if that's helpful.
Yes, please, Courtney, go ahead.
Okay. So we, as I mentioned briefly, and Dan also, we've done a little bit of engagement in the last month and a half. We had a couple of meetings prior to Christmas, the winter holidays, at two of our schools. And then we did four virtual events last week as well, under the circumstances. And like I, and attendance was, was really good. A lot of families came out. Principals did a great job of making sure folks knew about the event, and, you know, it was great to hear from our families about, and, and they were creative. They had some great suggestions of, of locations to further investigate. I thought it was, it's always great to, to hear, you know, from people who aren't in it every day and had some, some really good suggestions. So I know that Dan and Dana have added some of those to the list of sort of further exploration. But again, as I said, you know, I think option, option B at this moment has been, met with quite a bit of, of just disappointment. I don't think people like that option from what we're hearing so far. So yeah, they've been great, well-attended, people are engaged, we'll continue to talk to community, we'll continue to share as we move through the site identification and sort of investigation process, and, and Dan will talk more about what we need from the board to help move things forward.
Courtney, thank you so much for that, and, for that update on community engagement. The only thing I would just add is I want to appreciate our directors. You know, many of you have participated in in-person sessions or virtually over the last few sessions. And so it's, it's really, really helpful and really powerful, actually, to have you as the decision-makers at that table, you know, to hear directly from our families, because ultimately, this is your decision as a, as a, as an elected body, and wanting to make sure that, that you hear directly from our community. So as we continue this discussion with the, the schools that are impacted, you know, we, we will make sure to work with you to design, you know, engagement sessions that are meaningful for you as you make the decision, and obviously meaningful for our families so that they can create, that they feel comfortable to share their thoughts and opinions about a, a, a really sensitive issue, right? Conversation about equity came up, racial equity in particular, and, you know, it's important to know that this decision has multiple pieces to it, right? There's the cultural piece, right, there's the historical piece, there's the impact on our students and their ability, and, and their students, it's particular students of color who live in that neighborhood, et cetera. So when we look at equity, it's not a one-dimensional look, but it's a multi-dimensional look that looks at the history, the, the context, the, the decision points through those lenses. So I think, you know, look forward to working with all of you to, to engage our community in this really meaningful item in front of us.
Thank you.
I just want to speak to that a little bit. So when, I want to make sure that the community understands a few things. One, that there's no decision has been made, and I want to make sure that we're very clear on that. This, whether the move is contingent of, of a couple of things that we have no control over. One, the state legislation, legislator, the state giving us money to do this. Another one is we know we have land limits. You know, we, we don't have the space to move to everywhere that was suggested. And so I want to make sure with us as a community, that we letting the community know that just because something is an option doesn't necessarily mean it, it is an option. And I'm going to just go on record as saying, you know, you know, folks talk about Lloyd Center. Well, one, Lloyd Center's not for sale. And two, we don't have 300 and some million dollars if it was for sale to go buy it and retransform it to a middle school, and I think that would probably be a little bit big middle school for that, right? So I think we need to make sure that we realistic, and the, the goal for us to do these community engagements is to come together to be collaborative, to figure out a way for us to come together and find a solution for one of our schools that is historically, historically been an African-American school, to figure out a way to how do we help those students? And that's, the bottom line is it's about our students. It's not about our feelings, it's not about our political agendas, it's not about your personal feelings of if you want to walk to school or not, it's about our kids, and right now, they're in an unsafe place. And so our goal when we come into the community is not to say we want to move your school. Our, our goal and our messaging is we want to collaborate and find a solution for our school. And so I want to make sure that the community understands that, is that when we're coming to you, we're coming to you asking for solutions, saying, hey, this is what we got, and if you've got other solutions or other ideas, we're more than hap, happy to entertain those. So I want to make sure the community is very understanding of our goals and our mission, and the reason why we're coming to you, to the community so early on is to be inclusive, is to make sure we're being transparent. So you, you're asking for transparency, we're giving it to you. So this is the thing that, right now, we're asking for that collaboration, we're asking for those comments, we're asking for the inputs to help our school, our kids who's in an unsafe environment right now. So that's all I have to say about that.
I think I'd like to add something at some point as well. I just want to.
Why don't you go ahead, Dr. Green?
So I, it's imperative that we are, that we're transparent, and it's imperative the community knows that we're trying to do that. But I also, I, I was taking some notes and putting some stuff down, because it's also imperative that we understand where the frustration comes from and, and why this is such an issue. Because the black community around here has been displaced time and time again for the expansion of one thing or another. So first it was, first it was I-5, then it was the Memorial Coliseum, and then it was Emmanuel Hospital. And then each time that, that we wanted to make this expansion for the name, for the sake of making our community better and making it safer and making it more prominent, we moved and displaced black families. So when they built the I-5, and I'm just out there for everybody to read, in 1960, the Lower Albina neighborhood had a population of about 3,000 persons, about two-thirds of whom were black. In 1962, the Oregon State Highway Department carved Interstate 5 through the heart of this neighborhood and through North Portland, and directly demolished more than 300 homes, which never got replaced. Those families are still here today. Then in 1973, then when we said we wanted to do Emmanuel Hospital, which we moved families from, tore down houses and claimed it in eminent domain, and then we let it sit for years. It's set. So these families were, were told, we're going to build this immaculate hospital, and it's set for years, but we did this in the name of making the community better. And so of the hundred, of the 171 households forced out by the city through eminent domain between 1971 and 1973 to pave the way for Emmanuel Hospital, most of those homes, most of those families were black. So when we come in and we say, I, I just want us to be clear, because in order to really understand the gravity of what we're asking and where the frustration is coming from, you have to understand the years and years and decades of trauma that the community has, has faced, and now we're coming back as a school district and saying that our hands are tied, we've got to do something, which we do, but who's being impacted by this? Black families. So I just want us to be clear. I'm not, I'm not saying that, that what you're doing is wrong. I love the fact that we're being transparent and that we're talking about this now. I just want us to be crystal clear that the reason that we're seeing this pushback and the reason that people are irritated and the reason that people are frustrated because once again, white America is coming in and telling black families, we're going to make things better for you, but you got to go.
Well, Dr. Green, I absolutely agree with, with that sentiment and the.
Well, Director Green, I absolutely agree with that sentiment and everything that you've outlined. I actually want to make one specific clarity, though. And I think it's important, as we have this discussion as a community, that we look at the history, and that we actually listen to black families. Because the folks that are, you know, sending us emails and the ones that are doing this communication, those are not the black families that we need to hear back about, and that actually are impacted by this history. So, you know, I mean-
I 100% agree with that.
You know, Director Hollins did a masterful job, frankly, as a fellow, as a man of color, you know, being explained, being told the black history of Albina, you know, when you grew up in this community, and how disrespectful that was, frankly. And so, so I hear you, and I think it's important that, as a community, we have that real conversation in a very transparent way, and that one that lifts up, that actually lifts up the voices of our black community in this, in the city. Because for a long time, whether it's the school district, whether it's the city, whether it's the state, we have not done that. And you have our commitment as a staff, and I know that this board is committed to lifting up those voices, and making the decision that best serves black children.
I think, Director Scott?
I just want to add one very small point to this, which is, and getting back to what Courtney talked about with the state legislature, and I'm so glad that the governor is cooperating in the state legislature. I want to make sure that everything you all just said, that the legislature gets pulled into this process as well, as this is something they also need to focus on, because there are a lot of timelines that we hear about, and I get them, and I've been on the side of driving those timelines, and you gotta have a site, you gotta have this to get it in the capital plan. But what we absolutely don't want to do is short-circuit our engagement process and short-circuit hearing from the community in order to do this. The legislature also is focused on equity, or says they are, and wants to be moving. And I think this is how, when we talk about doing business differently than we always have, it means that maybe the legislature puts money in the capital plan, which they absolutely can, I promise you that as a budget person, even without a specific site, even without a specific end, you know, end thing. And they can do that, if they choose to do that. And if we get the local legislators on board with the fact that there is a short session, they can still include money in their capital plan, and we can still do engagement for as long as we need to, to respond to everything you've just said, this is gonna be win-win-win for everybody. And it'll be a way for the legislature to stand up and say, they are also focused on writing these historical wrongs.
So Director Scott, so those are exactly the conversations that are happening. So Courtney, and myself, and Lindsay Capps, the Chief Education Officer of the State, have been meeting individually with legislators, and also with the governor's office, on a pretty regular basis, individually, to ask them about it and kind of lay out like the costs, because, as you know, they need like a ballpark range to be able to put something in the budget. And early on, there was definitely a sentiment that we're not going to, you can't expect the legislature to give us money without a site. And over the last month, the conversation has evolved to thinking about including some sort of snapback language that we wouldn't actually have a site identified, but we'd still have a budget range. And we have some, you know, things that we can work with, because we know we obviously just built Kellogg's, so we have some idea of what a middle school built to our EdSpecs cost, but include in it, so they give the legislature, because they have a fiduciary responsibility, not just to hand PPS money and then nothing ever gets built, or, you know, whatever. So potentially including that in it, so that gives us, because we do have the opportunity right now, where everything is, I think things are very aligned, and there is money, so we definitely should look at 2022. The risk is, without a site, how do we demonstrate that we are going to actually use the money as they gave it? So we're working on that, but I think it's an excellent point, and we have to keep talking about that and explaining why we don't have a site. It's not because we haven't looked, but we do need to have the conversation with the community, and the challenges of finding a site within the historic Albina community.
Thank you for that work.
I appreciate that, too, and I want to add that, I would add criteria such as, the site has cleaner air than the current site, and access to, you know, solid transportation infrastructure, which most of Albina has. I'd also really like to see us allocate, have the legislature allocate dollars, and ask, you know, and find a spot that does not displace historically black residents. I was also surprised about, to hear about the freeway when it was built, because it is older than I am, but not by much, I guess, so. I, my family was impacted by the, all of that development work that happened in Albina. So, yeah, I really want to hear, I've heard very strongly from the community members, specifically at Saban, Principal Lathan, and the community members at Irvington. I was really impacted by what I heard at those two engagements. And it's not lost on me, the irony that we'd be making a decision that may impact historically black schools during Black History Month. And, you know, King is my neighborhood school, but I think mostly, I want to make sure that black families are not harmed in this process, one more time.
So if you're looking for feedback, I have just, on your list of sites, is that, you're done right now, or is that you're looking for the board direction right now?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say, I just clicked to the last slide, and so I appreciate everyone's comments, and I certainly appreciate the comments about this being a transparent process, that's the point. We want to be transparent, we want to be thorough, and it's going to be iterative. There's going to be trade-offs, there's going to be some tough decisions, and we want to make sure that we're being deliberate and we're being very clear about what criteria and what data we're using to make those decisions. You know, staff is going to continue looking at options. If resources are infinite, we'll be able to look at all options simultaneously, but we know that's not the case, and resources are limited. So feedback and direction from the board will help us use our resources wisely. So what we put up here is a couple of questions, the ones in orange are the ones, I think, we're most, we're interested in hearing all feedback. But these are the ones that will help guide our efforts going forward. And so a couple of specific questions are, we've only looked to purchase property, acquire new property within the existing Tubman Catchment area. We've heard from the Tumn community, they would like to stay in the neighborhood. There have been a lot of suggestions from others, not, you know, board members or staff, but from the outside, to look at sites outside of the catchment area. So we're curious to hear feedback on that, that potential option. And then if there are other specific sites, we are interested in being creative. And then, as far as the category B utilizing our existing properties, certainly during our engagement efforts, you know, we've heard some pretty strong sentiments about that. So we want to make sure that staff is headed down the right path by reviewing this as a potential option. If it is not, and something needs to be taken off the table, then we would like to know that now, so we don't spend more effort on that. But, so those were the main ones, but we're happy to take all feedback and questions.
Those are open-ended questions, and just in the interest of time, I'm just wondering if, are there staff recommendations in terms of these, in terms of the direction to go that might, I mean, because, I mean, we could all weigh in on that, I just, we might be here till 10, so.
Yeah, and I'll point out, our intention is to create kind of a series of meetings, so that we're taking the board along and we're providing updates. And so we have this meeting here tonight, and we intended this to be high-level, and, you know, wading in the water at a fairly high level. We're going to do an update at the IGC meeting next week, and then we're going to be scheduling other meetings as well. So right now, any feedback that we have that can help guide our efforts, we're happy to hear what those are, and there will be more opportunities, so it's not this and then done.
I can answer them. Okay. First one, should staff consider property outside of Harriet Tubman Middle School Catchment area? I think it would be a hard sell for me unless that property is like 100% the best property we've ever seen.
Perfect.
Like, period.
Yeah.
Ever. Are there other specific properties staff should evaluate? I don't know. And should staff continue to investigate category B? I would say yes, but with a caveat of continuing to work with community members. One positive I do see is, we're theoretically going to be modernizing all of our schools within the next 20, 30 years anyways, so this might just speed up the process for a couple of schools.
Way to do the lightning round, Jackson. I would concur with Jackson that I would not want us to consider property outside HCMS catchment area unless it was like the perfect property. I don't know of any specific properties that we should evaluate. I feel like the decision criteria that you all have listed about what is the length of time, what is the size, is it available, like all of that is the appropriate thing. Category B makes my heart hurt, I think for the same things that Director Green lifted up about displacement, and what Director DePass said about what are we doing to existing communities? And, you know, I know that we have to make some changes here to keep our students safe, like Director Holland said. I think we know that keeping students at the current Harriet Tubman site is not in their best interest. So I think one of the key information pieces about category B for me will be about the impacts on that community. And then the notion I wonder is, you know, I know Jefferson's got their property, and I know we've talked about building a Kairos on the Jeff property. Is there any way to look at the Jefferson design and add a Tubman there? And that may be like completely out of alignment, because we need so much land for a high school already that we don't have room for Tubman, but are there creative ways to co-locate those two programs, so that no one's displaced? And I don't know the answers to those, but that would be the question I would ask, under sort of, if we can't do category A, what's the least disruptive category B we could do?
I would say ditto to those answers on category A. On category B, I guess what I would say is, if we are going to continue to investigate that, it would have to be, like, the only way I'd be comfortable with it forward is if the community agreed. So, which I'm actually not, I mean, I think that can happen, if brought-
I like now.
I think it can happen in the sense of, if the rationale for moving Harriet Tubman to a particular site, and what's going to happen to those families, you know, if that is in fact what we as a district think is the best option, and we can convince the community it's the best option, then I say go forward with it. If it becomes a situation where we think it's the best option and we can't convince the community, then I say no. So I essentially put that in the hands of the community. I'm a little more optimistic, and again, I don't even know if it is the best option. I'm still optimistic that people, when you spend enough time with them, and really bring them into the process and explain everything, you know, you can change minds.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna go on with Director Lowery was saying, that, and I'm not gonna answer those questions specifically, but I think if we're looking at doing some kind of combination, and I think I mentioned this to, I emailed this to Dan before, if we're looking at being able to do something transformative and doing something audacious, for instance, and it doesn't have to be, I'm gonna make sure I'm clear, I'm not pointing out King for any particular reason, except for an example. If we, for instance, tore down King and build like a seven or eight-story building, where we had elementary on the bottom, middle on the top, or something like that, those are the kind of ideas and thinkings that we could look at trying to implement or do, but those are some of the kind of ideas that we're looking for, to see if those kind of ideas can work, which where you're not displacing, at least temporarily, not displacing, you know, a whole community, you're actually improving the community. I mean, you're proving the services and things that they can have at that school. So that's out.
So I'm gonna be additive, on the idea side, because you guys already have heard my opinion a lot of times. The question, questions I would have is, the multi-parceal sites, so here we have some smaller ones, but like the Boys and Girls Club, I mean, they're a partner of ours already, but the, if that's the Portland Police site, that's right next to it. Is there some multi-parceal sites that would be big enough? Because it looks like if you add those two together, you're at four, which is bigger than the current Tubman. And then the other thing is, like, I'm intrigued by Emmanuel, and I know PPS in the past has been very reticent to ever use as eminent domain, but I do know that suburban districts, other districts do it, and there is very limited, if we're all gonna say we want to keep it in Albina, there's limited sites that are big enough. And to me, that's one I think we should look at, and I'm not quite sure why the availability is long. Yeah, you know, it wouldn't be an easy conversation with Emmanuel, but there would be some restorative justice piece to it, in some ways.
They've already done that.
They've already sold it?
That's all that they have a relationship with, organization, cultural and civic organization to develop that land already.
Then why is it on the list?
A lot of stuff is on the list.
Oh, yes, yeah.
That don't need to be on the list.
So I think you should be looking at sites that just dig deeper, Irvington Park, and there's nobody that's just gonna hand us a four to five acre parcel. So to me, I think we need, my preference would be to look at some of these sites that we, that have the capability to build a big enough building versus moving outside of Albina.
Yeah.
But there's no easy site, that's clear. And if I, so I'd much rather do that than be in a way, unless it's some way that, like Director Hollins described, in which the community felt that it was an additive action versus something that's a takeaway.
I wanted to also, yeah, say, add to Director Hollins and Director Lowery's ideas of co-locating programs. I've actually attended a one-building, several academy or two-academy model, and really appreciate the creative thinking that was brought forth, and would hope that we would focus on very creative solutions that are reparative and restorative for this historic community, and not displacing, like, explore what we can do without the displacement, you know, using creative thinking and... Have you heard enough? Has everybody weighed in?
I don't really have anything else to add, other than that I, I'm with Jackson, it would have to be the absolute perfect property if it's outside of the catchment area now. Another thing that we need to keep in mind in this conversation is that we know that our enrollment is declining, and projected to decline for the next two decades, particularly at the elementary level, elementary and middle. So that should be a consideration when we're looking at some of these other sites, because the truth is, we may be in a position of consolidation, regardless of whether we're looking at any of those buildings for Harriet Tubman. So that's just a fact that I think we need to keep in mind. And there's something else, but it's escaping me. So thanks for all your work, and keep us posted, and let us know how we can help.
We very much appreciate the feedback, and I'll reflect back a couple of things real quick. I think I'm hearing pretty strongly that looking at new property outside the Tubman Catchment area is not a strong desire, but in case we find that perfect site, you know, we're not gonna rule that out, we're not gonna be absolutist here today about any of these options. And in similar category, the A, the new parcel is definitely preferred to the category B, even if it's being creative. Category B not necessarily being off the table, but, I won't use the words last resort, but definitely wouldn't be preferable. We want to find something new, build a new school, and we'll look to be creative with those options.
I'm sorry, I just remembered the other thing that I wanted to mention, which is that I think it's important, the timing is a little awkward, but it is important for us to connect this process with our Center for Black Student Excellence, and those investments, and to make sure that wherever we land, or whatever path we take in this process, is aligned with what we're looking at and where we might be going with those, because it's very much connected, and the timing is not ideal, but I don't want to lose sight of that.
Thank you for reminding us, Director Constam. This school community is absolutely an integral part of that constellation and initiative.
Thank you so much for putting your presentation together, and it sounds like you have enough information or feedback to move on to next steps.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna do a first reading. We're gonna do a first reading of, we're gonna, we're addressing a time-sensitive issue. Director Brum, would you introduce?
Great, thank you, Chair DePass. We have tonight before us a first reading of proposed amendments to the student representative and district student council policy, 1.20.
Is your mic on, Delia?
Oops, thank you. We have before us a recommendation from the Policy Committee to consider some amendments to the student representative and district student council policy, 1.20.012. And it came out unanimously, recommendation for a first reading, and I also have been to the district student council to present the proposed changes. We had a great dialogue. to present the proposed changes. We had a great dialogue, they asked a lot of good questions. Um, just in its essence is that this, that amendments would clarify that representatives um, to, um, for the student representative can be, for the district student council, they can either be elected or appointed. And that whether they're elected or appointed members of the district student council, they have equal rights. Um, there's also some language around the bylaws. Um, and there's also alignment on who is actually eligible to be the student representative, because our policy is, um, not, we have two policies that are inconsistent. So this would make it, um, anybody who's a sophomore to a senior would be eligible. And then it also makes some changes to the removal to, of the student representative and what the process would be to bring some clarity. And, um, we had a great discussion and I made the offer that, that if they had some changes they wanted to make, they could bring them to the committee. Um, to date, there have not been any, um, I, I haven't received anything. So with that, um, I would just say that the, this draft policy revision will be posted on the board website. The comment period is a minimum of twenty-one days. The contact information, public comment, will be posted on the policy. Um, the policy committee will consider any proposed changes, and then the board, um, will have a second reading if we're ready, um, in February eighth of twenty twenty-two.
It's February eighth or February first? For the twenty-one days?
Uh, well, I think that's the next board meeting after the twenty-one days.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So we are adjourned? Thank you. Thank you.